Okay, we're gonna open up, we are having a public hearing. Notice, City of Newport, notice of public hearing, notice there I given for the residents of Newport City, for month, that the Newport City Council will host a public hearing on Monday, December 18, in the City Council Room, 222 Main Street, 6:30 PM. The hearing will be held for purpose of public review of and comment on the proposed amendment to the Newport City Plan pursuant to Title 24 of VSA Chapter 117. The purpose of the proposed Newport City Plan is to establish a coordinated, comprehensive planning process to guide decisions made by the city. The proposed plan amendment is a minor one, and entails the inclusion of maps developed by the Northeastern Vermont Development Association. No substantive changes are proposed to the plan. And now have the public hearing open for the changes to the municipal plan. And basically, all that was changed was the inclusion of the maps of the city. They were inadvertently not included in the original plan which was approved, and so we had to add the maps, and this was all because it came to light because we are going for our designated downtown renewal, and so we just wanted to have it more formalized with the various maps. The maps include, we don't have the maps on display.
I think they're attached to the back.
They are attached?
They are.
The maps are right here. They include a base map of the city, a land cover map of the city, the zoning, orthography, natural constraints of development, and the designated downtown. Gee, I didn't mean to scare you away by reading the... Are there any questions from anybody with regards to the amendments to the municipal plan?
This is all maps that had been available, had existed before and had been available, and were just were omitted from the plan, but maybe better in the plan? Am I understanding that correctly?
There was a phrase that they were being worked on when they were actually complete, and so we now have the complete set of maps.
Well, very nice. Picture being worth a thousand words.
Yes, and it was a requirement, having the maps is a requirement of designing downtown renewal, and so by having them in the plan, we now have a complete city plan. And with that, if there are no questions on that aspect, I'll close the public hearing and call the Newport City Council meeting to order for Monday, December 18, 2017, in the City Council Room. All members of the City Council are present. Others include Laura Dogan, our City Manager, and James Johnson, our Club Treasurer. The next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of December 4, 2017. Now that ended the motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the council minutes of 4 December, with two typos on page two that James already corrected. He already went from diner to dinner, because he must go check if he catch out.
Anything else on that? The motions we made is in a second. Made and seconded, with two minor corrections. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public, and this is an opportunity for members to talk about anything which is not on the agenda. I noticed the majority of people who signed here are for the snowmobile trail, except we have a Haley Hotch, hot. Did I pronounce it correctly?
Good evening, my name is Haley Hope, and I'm a new resident here in Newport. As a young professional who's been civically engaged in the communities that I attended previously, I wanted to voice my shock and concern regarding how community members have been treated in this council setting. I've attended multiple council meetings since moving to Newport, and I've witnessed disrespect, contempt, and intimidation directed at community attendees. It's disappointing to see, because this is not the case in other communities that I've been a part of, and I don't believe that it should be the case here. The people in this room, all of us care deeply about our neighbors and these cities and welcoming. You are a public servant, meaning that you were chosen to serve all members of our community regardless of our differences in opinion. I simply wanted to take this opportunity to ask that you are mindful to treat your passionate and concerned citizens in this realm with patience and respect going forward.
Quick one? Yeah. I wanna, I guess I have to identify myself, Brian McNeil, and I live in the City of Newport, and I just wanted to ask the question here, when you have an item that states like the municipal plan vote, can we as the public have a say-so before you actually take that vote as a council, or do we have to do it? It's hard to do it before, because we don't know what to, if there's any changes when you're ready to vote for that particular item, and can we have the opportunity to be able to comment on those individuals?
Yes, whenever there's a vote, before the vote is taken, there, excuse me, whenever there is an item on the agenda that says "vote," before the vote is actually taken, there's an opening up for public comment. Moving on, the next item is municipal plan vote. And at this time, we would need a motion to approve the minor amendment to the municipal plan.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Made and seconded, and now discussion? Did you have something? Brian?
Yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure now that on the last paragraph states there, and I read it real fast, the city has determined that it's necessary to inform the reader of this plan. The proposed EB5 projects are now void. While this notice is regrettably necessary, it is nevertheless a known and significant update affecting the near-term future of the city, and one of those effects is like you state, Newport wants to revitalize the downtown area, if you had to have another map made to do so, things resort. But do the people, do you believe that the city of Newport and the residents and they know exactly why that happens, and especially because of the fact that in 2013, the council was told that that was a corrupt and fraud program that was presented by the US government? And it wasn't at that time, they were still innocent until they became guilty when it was, when they finally worked on it, this last year.
When the plan was created in 2014 and adopted in 2015, the EB5 program was still a viable program. Nothing had come to light in the state of Vermont or locally that indicated any type of corruption. That was still a valid aspect of the municipal plan. So that is why it was in the 2015 plan, because nothing had come to light as far as the state of Vermont or the city, as far as any illegal activity. Things were still on track, permits were still being gathered, and so there was nothing to say to take it out of the plan. Anything else on the municipal plan? Anything, council members? Then all those in favor of the motion to approve the amended plan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. The next item is to approve the 2018 calendar year of City Council meeting dates.
So I've generated a proposed schedule based on this, based on this year's schedule and knowing what the holidays are. Charter says you meet the first, and the first Monday, and then the third Monday is optional as I understand it. So I tried to keep these to two meetings a month. Can't keep them to every single Monday due to Monday holidays, but can with some regularity keep it to the third Monday of the month. And the one thing that I wanted to point out is that our centennial celebration is gonna be, we could have a meeting on July 3, and I would highly recommend we not meet that particular Monday, because we're gonna be out straight with the Centennial Celebration festivities, that's right in the thick of it. So I had proposed that we meet July 9 and July 16, that particular month, and that's entirely up to you if you'd like to do that. The rest, take a look at these, match them up with your calendar. They're pretty close to what we meant this year, but for that change. Does anybody see anything?
What was the question?
Can we do that by charter saying the first Monday of the month?
Yeah. Can't do it every Monday. Anything else on the proposed schedule for the upcoming year?
In some circles, April 2, which is Easter Monday, is a holiday, and I will be tired, but I will be available.
Any other questions on the calendar?
May I ask a question? Is it required that you have your informational meeting about the annual meeting the night before the vote?
No, little history. We thought we would have more people attend an informational meeting about the budget and appropriations and so on and so forth, so we decided to have it on a Saturday, thinking, well, Saturday, more people get, you know, during the day, not at night, figured more people might come out during the day. We had less, and so we decided to keep it as part of a regular council meeting the night before the town meeting, the night before the annual meeting.
Right, so may I follow up on that? My, for those that come and attend the meeting, this informational, there's no opportunity for the press to cover it, that meeting, and share that information with a wider audience, because it's the night before and we aren't, we don't go to press. None of us would publish that for the next day. So if it's just traditional, or if you're really trying to reach more people, the February 19th would be a better meeting, but I don't know if you have your city report back yet or whatever, but I'm just, in the interest of providing more discussion earlier.
February 19th. It's a suggestion. Check and see if we maybe could look into it, we could always change to be 19th if we can. I'm not sure if the annual report would be...
It has to be at least five days, or it can't be more than five?
It's gotta be within the five days.
Okay, so it couldn't be the preceding Monday or something like that?
I don't think so.
You could just check into that, that'd be good.
Well, just...
No, that's a good point.
Just throwing it out for information's sake, rather than, I mean, I'm, it's irrelevant to me, I don't vote here, but in the interest of sharing information, it would make sense, but...
Because usually, I know Derby has their actual voting meeting the night, Monday night, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And we created the informational meeting, of course, because the voters years ago decided to do away with the regular, the old-fashioned, traditional town meeting.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, to follow on my colleague's comments, it might be possible to have the official meeting the night before, but to schedule a period to discuss some of the issues that will be on the ballot on the February 19 meeting, so that information can get to the public and people who want more details could show up at the Monday night meeting. Just, you know, raising that as a possibility.
Excellent.
Press packets or something like that.
All we could have, we just have is an item we'll discuss, we just have a period where we discuss the items on the ballot, and you can't change anything at that point, and sorry, ballots are already printed and absentees have already been, you know, mailed and things like that, but we can at least have an informational meeting.
Also, now that I think about it, if you are planning to put the water tower issue back on the ballot for the March town meeting, you're going to have to have hearings anyway, so you could combine that as well, just...
Very good.
Can I get a motion so I can change the word "proposed" to "approved"?
It's a motion.
Thank you.
Motion made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second.
Do we want to do provisionally approved, or just approved and...
We can approve these, because these are the actual dates, firm dates.
If we need to amend, oh right, if we need to have an additional meeting.
We could always add additional meetings throughout the year as we need, and as far as the informational type meeting, that's just part of a regular council meeting, so that can be moved to the 19th. We could even have a special meeting to do it. So are there any, so a motion?
Made and seconded.
Made and seconded. Any discussion on that, on the calendar? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries.
Laura.
The next item is the water sewer utility van replacement, follow up.
Tom Burnier, I'm the news and speaker, and you received information for us. As you requested, I met with the three local dealers. Two were able to meet our spec, as I felt, after the Vemo, Hayes Ford, and DeLavre Auto Sales. I'm requesting that we purchase the van from DeLavre Auto Sales for $37,000 and change.
Questions from the council members, received the memo from Tom. The two different quotes, one was from Hayes Ford, and it was in the amount of $41,958. The other one, which meant the spec was DeLavre Auto Sales, and they were, their quote was
Do you have your paperwork there with you? Okay, on the quote from DeLavre, you've got $98.77 for Unicel body installed and delivered, but on the quote itself, it doesn't match up. Is that the installation charge involved in that as well, or...
Well, if you go by his, uh... The first sheet I gave you, the email sheet, that broke it all out, the cost. The cost on that spreadsheet from Unicel is a little bit different than what he actual, I have it right here. That was, his quote came as an email. So we get, you get that first sheet?
Yeah.
So he's kinda broke it all out. So the Unicel was $98.77.
Right, but on the quote sheet itself, it was $97.36.
Two pages later.
With freight involved, and it was over $10,000.
I'm going by his quote of price, I don't care what the, what the Unicel price was. I'm going by his quote of price.
Okay.
Right here.
So as long as, then we should note that, if that's what you're going with. Probably giving us a discount.
Any other questions on, on this? Then we would need a motion to approve. Oops.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. So a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Made and seconded, discussion?
Yes, before the vote, how, did anybody go to, we have another auto dealer, it's not Newport, it's North Point, and they handled Ram. Did anybody go with that?
They could not meet our spec.
Okay, and, yeah. Anything else?
No.
Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to also say that this is better than two weeks ago, when you thought it would be around $50,000, so...
Yes, it was a lot better.
Causing a two-week delay, we saved $13,000. Probably not for you.
Yeah, I know.
The next item on the agenda is the VAS proposal, and...
I have to give, I think I am saying to participate by phone, this is Ernie Pamela.
Ernie Pamela, who's sort of, this, I would like to participate in that whole complex by phone.
Right, Hope, he, he said he had a meeting, so if he doesn't answer, that's because he's been on the case.
So we will continue. No, that was the municipal plan, that was the city plan. These are the maps.
Ernie Pamela?
Hi, Ernie, it's Laura Dogan, and the Newport City Council, in a room full of people, how are you?
I'm good, good evening.
That's great, thank you so much. You are on speaker, and the mayor has just, I'm gonna turn you up. The mayor has just called the VAS proposal on the agenda, so I wanted to make sure that you were on the phone to hear it, and with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
This was a proposal that was presented two weeks ago at the City Council meeting, I believe there's Mr. Goslin here, did you have other things you'd like to add or discuss?
Yeah, sure, I can address the crowd, because there's some new faces. So for those that don't know me, my name is Roger Goslin, and I'm here representing Vermont Association of Snow Travelers, which is the statewide organization that manages the 5,000 miles of snowmobile trail in Vermont. I'm here to follow up on a proposal that I brought forward to the City Council last, last two weeks ago at the last meeting, to try to get a snowmobile trail into the city to get snowmobilers in here, to patronize the local businesses. Excuse me, every time I drive through Newport, I attend a city event, I go to a city business, I walk the city streets, the conversation about how can we make this a better place always comes up, and this is the way that I'm proposing that we do this, especially during the winter time. I want to get people in here, I want to get people in here that are gonna enjoy this during the winter time, and that are also gonna come back during the summer, patronize these businesses, and see what Newport has to offer. I have found what I believe is the safest, most efficient manner to do that, by bringing snowmobiles down through Broadview Street to Landing Street, and then getting them into the Causeway area, and then eventually, hopefully, to downtown. It's, it keeps us off the ice, which is unpredictable, can be unsafe at times. Yes, there are times when it is safe, for sure, but there are, you know, weeks before and weeks towards the end of the season where the ice is not a safe place to take. So those are weeks, up to a month, that this city is not gonna see snowmobilers, and that goes against what I'm trying to do here. So thank you for having me back, I appreciate you taking the time to hear me out last week or two weeks ago, and at some point, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, it would be nice to hear each one of the members of the councils' opinions, or how they see this, you know, kind of poll the council.
Okay. And we have, it was requested by Jillian Staniford, and we have a small presentation, so I, she emailed some slides, or three slides.
I'm sorry, I thought I would get the big screen, so I'm not sure how well this would translate.
You know what, we can, we can put that down. Put that down, that's okay.
But I'd like to put these to the City Council members.
Turn that over.
And a letter.
Get a sheet.
And a petition. Should I go back to my seat?
It'll just take a second for the projector, I think it's coming on now. It's on there now.
I'd like, hi. It's just, it's one piece for you each, sorry. My name's Jillian Staniford, I live at 111 Broadview Avenue, and I've lived there for 28 years in the City of Newport. I also work at North Country Career Center, so I not only live in the area, I also work in the immediate area. I'd like to make a short statement, and then I'd just like to do a presentation that shows a visual of what's being proposed. I'm a very visual person, I thought it might help clarify the scale of the proposal and how it may impact the neighborhood. The final comment made to me at the last meeting on December 4 was, quote, "You should change your culture," end quote. I didn't know how to respond to this, but I went home and I did a lot of soul searching. For the past two weeks, I've talked to hundreds, for the past two weeks, I've talked to hundreds of people of all ages and all walks of life, and I realized my culture is just fine, and it lies within the majority boundaries of how culture is defined in our city and in this county. And most people told me they define culture as respect, collaborative living, and recognizing the differences of others. Everyone I talked to, from a volunteer who gives snowmobile safety course to the students at my school where I work, to my oldest neighbor, believe that people are free to choose and recreate how, where, and when they want without infringing on others. We all like to do different things, and we all owe our neighbors the same right. Everyone also agrees that economic development is important and necessary, and should be done with long-term vision and planning, that should not create an us versus them mentality, but it should be a reality that can reconcile the right to live and work in a peaceful, productive environment that respects both commercial and residential areas, and recognizes the difference between them. An alternative route that is exclusive for snowmobile recreation is the prudent and appropriate action in this case. This to me means that Newport City is trying to encourage snowmobile traffic that will grow and make significant contributions to the economy. I agree with that, and every person that I talked to also agreed with that. However, the majority of the people who live in my residential neighborhood, and 150 other people who signed my petition, believe that if that's the case, this snowmobile to come into Newport, it should be done in commercial areas where commerce exists and where it will be safe and most effective. I would be very happy to work to this end with VAS... I would be very happy to work to this end with VAST and with any other group that wants to raise funds and try and find a dedicated snowmobile trail that will lead to and pass by commercial enterprises that will welcome businesses. Just to be brief, in the last two weeks, these are facts and figures I've accumulated. The proposed snowmobile trail that goes down through Perry Beach Park onto Broadview and the landing is almost four-tenths of a mile long. Six out of six of the property owners that I visited on my immediate street, I should actually say five and a half, because one person I didn't get to talk to. Five and a half out of the seven homes, one is not occupied. So those five and a half property owners are not in favor of the trail on our street, and I will explain why. Twelve of the property owners that I personally visited on Duchess, Hoskins, and Colfax, again, are not in favor of a snowmobile trail down a small residential area that has been designated as a bike path. This gives me eighteen out of twenty-one houses in my immediate neighborhood that are not in favor of the snowmobiles sharing the road in these small, narrow streets with walkers, snowshoers, dogs, children, whatever. And that's what we have in our neighborhood right now. Approximately a hundred and fifty residents of the Newport Derby and surrounding towns signed a petition that I presented to the city council. That they request that the bike path and the recreational trail be left for non-vehicular traffic whenever possible, due to safety concerns. I have also learned eighty-five decibels of noise is harmful to human hearing. A snowmobile manufacturer told me, snowmobiles are now manufactured at eighty-two decibels, which is very close to that threshold. Assuming that you have more than one snowmobile going past at a time, that does increase over the threshold of harm to human hearing. The other thing that I was informed of is that if a groomer is going to run on the city streets between ten PM and six AM with lights and noise, that would actually be a violation of the Newport City Ordinance Policy, Section Two, Subsection D. I now like to just go over three visuals to give you an idea of what will happen on our neighborhood. This is Freeman Street here, and I have to apologize, I'm not a photographer and I'm not an expert. The width is to scale, so I went out and measured this with a tape measure on my own two little feet, and I put it on a grid to scale. Freeman Street, which is right here, is twenty-six feet wide, and it has vehicular traffic in both directions. There are seven houses that have driveways on that street that back onto that street. The current snowmobile bike path is separate from the street. It is approximately ten feet wide with an eight-foot buffer between the snowmobile trail, the walking trail, and the street. The houses, on average, are forty-six, forty-seven feet from Freeman Street and eighty-one feet from the actual snowmobile trail. In Canada, the regulation is that where they run trails past residential, they recommend at least twenty meters, which is at least sixty feet. So for the people of Freeman Street, that does exist. Could you go to the next slide, please? This is my street, this, sorry, this is Broadview Avenue. My street is nineteen feet wide, and the snowmobile trail, and these are my little images, if you can see them all back there. We have snowmobiles, we have cars, we have bikes, we have walkers. So there is no separate exclusive trail for snowmobiles to travel on. It would actually travel on this road, which is nineteen feet wide. There are seven driveways that enter onto Broadview Avenue, and the houses are at an average of twenty-five feet from the street, which would be the snowmobile trail. So every house on my street is within twenty-five feet of the snowmobile trail. We also have Duchess Street, which comes into Broadview, where there's a walking path and there's two-way traffic, and this is Landing Street down here. Could you go to the third slide, please? So this is where it gets a little confusing, and this is, again, to scale and width, and it shows you the difference between the current snowmobile trail, which is on Freeman Street, and the proposed, which is on my street. And I will show you. So if you look at where the snowmobiles would run, first of all, the major differences on Freeman Street, they don't run on the street with cars. On my street, they would. On Freeman Street, the houses are eighty-one feet from the bike path, snowmobile trail. On my street, they're here. So this is an actual scale. Our front doors are here, our driveways exit onto this path. On Freeman Street, it's a very different configuration. I think there's nobody I talked to that would suggest they wanted a snowmobile trail running twenty-five feet from their front door. And this would also include groomers coming down the street. Again, if they come at night, that is a noise issue, it's a light issue, and it creates a disturbance for our neighborhood. I really have nothing else to say. I appreciate the council listening to me. I think that, again, in the in all honesty, the vast majority of my neighborhood is not in favor of this. And that involves over thirty residences with dogs and children and old people and shut-ins. And I think that as citizens of Newport, that we would respectfully request that an alternative route that is exclusive for snowmobiles that would make our neighborhood safe and quiet should be the solution to this problem. Thank you.
Jillian? This was my stuff on the chair.
Oh. Oh, thank you, Laura.
Okay. Question just.
I'd like, I don't have a presentation, but I'd like to speak up as well. Frank Rishardi, I own Lago Trattoria on the corner of Main Street and Coventry Street, and I think it's a crime that we live in an area that thrives on the tourist community to make money, to help us all survive these long winters, to not let a snowmobile trail come through here. Snowmobile trails go through Stowe, they go through every other small town around here. Yes, we're a city, yes, they're gonna make noise, but I bet your snowplow makes more noise than the snowmobile trail does, or the groomer coming down the street. But I am all for this, I think that I think this city council, I think the town needs to get the snowmobile trail through this community to help business owners, to help other people to survive these winters, survive living here in the northeast kingdom. We need the tourist dollars, we need the tourists back. They may find us in the winter, come back in the summer, now we have people coming up here four seasons. It this needs to go through. It may not need to go through this neighborhood, it definitely should have an alternative route across the ice, because the ice hinders everybody, but we need to get the snowmobile trail through this town. And it's up to the city council to pass this through. We are a tourist area, we need the tourist dollars, believe me. That's all I have to say.
I have to agree with Frank, Mr. Frank. I sometimes don't find it by my house, four thirty in the morning, wake me up. I don't have a problem with it, they're doing the job.
You can go over.
Oh, okay. Anne, Anne and then I leave.
I just wanted to offer, when I looked at Newport City map, an alternative, which is that if the VAST trail, for the purposes of coming into Newport, came across the Palin Farm, all of that area is, you know, not not being used by anybody right now, and then it could figure out how to get down to any of the access roads and straight into and straight into the mall, which they want to go to. There's hardly anything, the road, the Pussumsick Bank Road has almost nothing on it. And I think that at one point, they must have come in that direction, and I don't see why they can't still do that, and then no one would be upset by them coming into the city. So that's an alternative route.
Pussumsick Bank Road is federal. The federal government controls that, that's the interstate, you're talking about the interstate access road?
Mm-hmm.
That's federal government.
Okay, what about coming from ordinary farm, which we know?
That I'm gonna have to leave up to Mr. Goslin. But before I go there, let's get some more questions. I had Eileen Illusi, Margaret Derrick, then Derek Grant, and I. And then I'll get to you, Ken, after. Okay, so.
A couple of things, one is, while I am not a Newport resident, I'm a Derby resident. I am the director of the North Country Career Center, and I'm concerned for the safety of the students that are at the high school and at the Career Center, because they use a bike path for walking, they go over to Prowdy Beach. They spend a lot of time there. So that's one safety issue, another safety issue is, sometimes they take snowmobiles to school in the winter. So if they are going to take snowmobiles, and then they're going on the supposed path, and then there's also commercial vehicles on there, who has the right of way? And I know that it's been said, well, it hasn't proved to be unsafe, but it also hasn't proven to be safe. So I have concerns about safety for our residents, such as Mrs. Staniforth, who walk, the kids who walk. And the other thing I'm really concerned with is this seems to be a proposal that came about in good faith, and I support VAST, and I support snowmobiling, and I don't think Mrs. Staniforth said anything that she doesn't either. But this is kind of the first jab at things. This was the first proposal. I think we should be cautious, as we should with all of our economic development, which I'm a member of trying to get things going in the Newport area, to make a plan, to not just jump in and say, oh yeah, we need snowmobiles, because it's gonna be the answer, when currently, people are upset about it, taxpayers of the city, and everyone isn't on board, if there are a hundred and fifty minutes on that petition. So I think that we should work with VAST, I think it should be part of our overall economic development plan, but I think we should plan carefully and with everyone's consideration, both business people and community members.
Can I just say one thing? While I agree with the petition, a lot of the people on that petition don't live and pay taxes in Newport. I just wanted to make that known to people, while I, you know, we as a council, we have to weigh all options, but I just want to put it out there that there's a lot of people on that petition that don't live in the city, I know they live in Derby.
Yes, but there are a lot of people who signed that petition, who use the bike path, who come into Newport, and that's where you're gonna get your economic development. Because you're not gonna get your economic development just for the sins of Newport.
No, but I'm just wanting to say that, no, I'm not, I'm not.
Excuse me.
Well, let me, let me, okay.
Well, the people who come in on snowmobiles aren't all from Newport either, so I think we need to keep things on a level.
No, but it's. But I'm also concerned, if you're concerned about safety, the high school allows the students to use snow machines, correct? And they go down the bike path already.
They go across the lake.
No, they go down the bike path, and they go off Duchess Street right now, too. They go all around from the. So, but okay, let's go to Margaret, and then after there, and then Derek after that. I'm trying to, no, Brian, you're down the list, I've got some people ahead of you.
I know, I know.
I'm not quite as eloquent or articulate as these last speakers, but I'm speaking on behalf of myself. I've been a Newport resident for fifty years. My husband has lived here all his life. My husband, I'm Margaret Derrick, my husband's Michael Derrick. He's lived on Taylor Street, which is in the city limits. We live on the corner of Union and Love. Recently, this has nothing, a lot to do with anything, but my husband was sick and he started walking. I'm very proud of him, he walks every morning. His walking trail is a crossroad. Right now, the VAST trail goes by the high school. It goes down to Jillian Street. Down, he has a loop, so it's it's where the VAST trail is now, it's where the proposed trail is. He does not, he's, he, we are not anti-VAST by any means. I grew up in, I, good, they wanna come in, great. They used to come across the lake, there used to be tons of snowmobiles across the lake. We're so sorry, it doesn't freeze over anymore. But he does walk, and he notices that he cannot walk where the VAST trail is along the football field. He says it's too topped up. It's not easy walking, so he walks in the road and gives free pass to the VAST and the snowmobilers. He's concerned with walking down Broadview Street, I had all these notes, I'm sorry, I'm not being very good.
Oh, it's okay.
He's concerned, he's concerned both with the safety, and his comment was, and this isn't like, my husband never really says too much, neither do I, but he says, I think maybe something will happen, and they're waiting for something to happen that's not good. He says, he agrees with snowmobilers coming in, but he doesn't agree with them being on our streets, taxpayers, and we are paying for those streets. I don't know if you've seen Prowdy, Prowdy Street, where the snowmobiles go over, and we have to fix that road and sidewalk, have you guys walked? Over the years, have you, anyone? Have you known how it was torn up, we have to fix those streets? Also, the bike path is all torn up along the high school, we have to fix those streets. And I would assume down Broadview, those streets will be torn up as well, and we'll probably pay for those as taxpayers, that's a side note. But our main issue is safety. We are city residents, we have all the city, the ambulances, the snowplows, the school buses going by, we have the methadone clinic, everybody walks by, and throws their trash on our street. We don't say anything, this is part of being in the city, and we understand that. Snowmobiles is something I, as a resident, agree that they should have access to the commercial businesses, but it should not be residential. I, as a taxpayer, my husband as a taxpayer, we do not want it, we would like to find an alternative route. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Derek Grant, I am the owner and general manager of the Newport City in its recent thirty-four seasons. I just want to say that I think Newport should definitely have snowmobile access, whether it's right now, which I mean, I hope it is, but it doesn't happen now. I hope that they definitely continue working on it. It's something that we had a lot of years back, and a bunch of different things, and it kind of just went away, and we'd like to see it again. I think it's something that does help the businesses, because I can see a direct correlation from one hotel to the other with the snowmobile business. You know, I can look at books and go back about ten, twelve years ago, when we could get into the city and see numbers that reflected that, as opposed to now, that doesn't happen. Same with, you know, the Derby Hotel, we see a lot of snowmobiles, we interact with them on a regular basis, and they would love to come to Newport and visit our restaurants, and go to the gas stations, and go to a movie. And you know the stuff they do in a vehicle, but on their snowmobile, but we hear it time and time again, there's no way for them to get here. And yes, the lake is accessed, but all the businesses lose about a month, roughly, if we do that. So maybe the current isn't the answer, I don't know. But I really think that we need to get with, you know, like they said, other areas, other cities, and get access into the city. It's not a magic bullet, it's not the end-all, it's not the answer for everything we're going through now, but I think with everything we're facing, I think we need pieces and works, and this is just another piece that could add to our city. So I hope it's approved, and if it's not, I hope, continue working on it and do approve something.
I know, I'm just studying the map. I was listening, just trying to. I wish that map extended, but it doesn't.
Where do you want it to extend, because you have a better one.
No, I didn't think it would go far enough, what I want to look at. That was the Google Earth put up. That's okay.
Well, the VAST, VAST puts out a great app, I've been looking over the whole, the whole list.
We'll go with Ken, and then Brian.
If if they came into town and they went down into Prowdy Beach, and down on the main part of the beach, around that point, they would come out at the end of Broadview Street, how much beach space is in there? Does anybody know? Does anybody know?
I'm almost done.
There's none there at all? All right.
I walk there in the winter, and actually, I walk there with my dog and the mutter as well. And in the winter, there is hardly any water, and you can both walk, I mean, it's all sand. You have plenty of access for snowmobiles.
I figured you were trying to hit him out of some way.
And there's no water.
Okay, well, as long as I lived here, I've never been down there in a machine.
Okay, then we had Brian. Were you finished Ken?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, no, I just, I just wanna make sure. We have Brian, and then I think I saw Charlie pronto in the back. Yeah, okay. So go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
Dennis, take the notes for me.
I just wanna bring out, I'm not, I'm not against snowmachining. However, when the snow machines first came out in the fifties, they went putt-putt-putt, because they had twelve-horse engines. Now, they got a hundred, they can go a hundred and twenty mile an hour now. Back then, they, you could get them up to twenty or thirty, and you're doing good. Um, so you have the speed. And being an excellent law enforcement officer, like this is very hard to control. You can't control snow machines like you would car track. And, uh, the VAST trails became known because of that fact. And that's why the state of Vermont put the VAST trails in, to be able to keep the snow machines from going all over, and cutting people's fences and things of this sort. Uh, the golf course, a couple of years ago, had a restaurant they opened in the wintertime. And, uh, the trail went behind my home, and went over the golf course. And they found out that, they got off the trails and ruined some of the greens on the golf course 'cause they didn't stay on the trail. So you got, it only takes one and a half old to, to rot the whole barrel, so to speak. And, uh, so you have to, if, if you're gonna have snow machines, first thing is, and I agree with somebody, rot something up. It's, uh, if you're in a hurry to do something like this, it's gonna be bad. You gotta study everything. Uh, a sign's gonna have to be made for speed limits for snow machines. Uh, all this has to be done, because otherwise, it's, it's not gonna happen. Uh, so this can't happen overnight. And the, the closed route, uh, like you say, uh, on, uh, they had a snow machine route through the waterfront plaza at one time. And, uh, there were, the snow machines were taken in the place of cars. They wouldn't let the cars come in off the causeway, because they decided they were gonna cross with railroad crossings there, and they wouldn't stop. If you have a twenty-five snowmachiners, and they all decide to go, they aren't gonna let you in. So you're gonna be sitting out there on the causeway until they get out of the way. And that happened. So there's a lot of aspects that should be studied before a route can be established. And, and, and of course, safety is the big thing, especially with the speeds that the snow machines can get. And these people come up here from Downcountry with the best machines they can buy, and those best machines have the best motors in them, and I can, and I can tell you that for a fact. And they're gonna use them up here, because they can't use them where they come from.
Charlie pronto?
Yeah, um, well, I come at this from a little different angle. I mean, I lived in Newport most of my life. Most of the time, I lived in Island Pond, fifteen years, which was the snowmobile capital of the east. When I moved to Island Pond, by, by the way, I'm back, I am now a resident of Newport. Um, but when I lived in Island Pond, I kept wondering, why the hell Newport doesn't allow this? I mean, if the, the business, economic vitality that it brings to our communities, I believe. I don't believe that you can, um, I, I would like to see them go one step farther and come across the railroad bridge, and get into the parking lot right at, right at downtown.
That's the goal.
But, I mean, you can't have access into the city without affecting someone. And I can understand living there, where that would be an issue for those people that live there. But for the betterment of the community, I mean, you're talking, the season is ten weeks. The, the noise problem is vastly reduced from what it used to be, because people use four-stroke motors now, which are a lot better. And that's all they're making now, pretty much. But the economic boost that it would give this community is unbelievable. I, I ran a business in town for twenty-five years, dealt with many of the business people in town. And I know how, how much they struggled all winter long, you know, trying to make a living here. I wonder why we don't have things in this community. The reason we don't have things in this community, because we don't have people coming in here. We need the dollars. I think you could regulate it, that the people that were worried about the walking on the bike path. We have sidewalks for that? Not everywhere, not everywhere. But, I mean, I didn't interrupt you, I don't mind. But the, um, the, uh, I just, I, I think all of those things can be worked on. And I just think it would be wonderful for the city.
I'm having a mental block, I.
Tammy.
Thank you. And I know what I can, thank you.
Hi, I'm Tammy. Um, I'm definitely not a Goslin or a Gray, don't have the big name. But I live over on Hoskin Street, and.
Let's keep it simple, please.
Okay.
Let's not, let's not make it personal and attack, you know, or make it, you know, against business owners.
Okay, I live on Hoskin Street, which is right by where they want the snowmobile trail to go down. I used to live on Prospect Street, which was noisy, very noisy. I moved over to the other side of Newport, because I wanted to be in Newport. But it was, it was nice and quiet. Besides the facts that we have, the east side having their music play, I can deal with that. But I live right there, I have two dogs, I walk, one got hit by a car, and has petrified of cars. And snow machines even worse. I walk that loop to get out, get exercise with my dogs. And I think that that would be the worst thing to do. For them to be able to go down to the east side, drink, do whatever they're gonna do, jump back on the deathtrap snowmachine, and go flying past us again, where they're not gonna be able to see us. That corner is sharp, it's dark, they took out the lights. My daughter almost hit a guy that was passed out in the middle of the street last year. On Hoskin Street, he was passed out, they took out our lights. She almost ran this guy over. So since that happened, they did put in one light down where she almost hit this gentleman. But I think it is a horrible, horrible idea. It's not gonna benefit anybody, really.
Just a second. Mr. Shenat, if you allowed us to speak, I'd love you to.
Okay, um, these questions would be basically for Tom and Mr. Gilson. Um, one, does the snowmobile route, and that would be on the other slide, please, or? Or that shows the, um, Vista Parking Lot? Yes, okay. Does that snowmobile route go on to the recreation path by Wendy's? It looks like it does according to that photo.
The way I've drawn it up is, yes, it does. It does not have to stay that way. Um, there's quite a few options once we get down there. Um, even going on the grass behind Wendy's, behind City Cinema, and that way, and then getting onto the parking lot there. I don't, I just kinda drew up a couple of options.
Okay, Tom, is there a gate that runs right along the path? That would prevent them from getting on the bike path?
Well, there's a portion of the fence along the tracks, and then where the retaining wall is.
Right.
But they could cross, uh, Gina's Field and access that path.
And in this particular option, it shows that it gets on right here, and isn't there a fence right there?
No.
There's no fence right there, so they can access that, that path, okay. Uh, next question was, uh, does the recreation path fall into the jurisdiction of the city or the state?
We own it.
Okay, so it's the city. Thank you. And the last one, uh, which kind of echoes what, uh, Mrs. Derrick said. Uh, damage to the recreation path and roads. It, it does damage, uh, Proudy Drive over by the Lucas property in the grounds. And as well, on Union Street, where they go from the armory across there. Who was, who's gonna pay for the damage that it certainly would do if it goes along the recreation path? Either along Freeman Street, down through the park, and down through this area here?
In the past, we have, uh, individual clubs have worked with their local municipalities and jurisdictions on coming up with ways to fix it. If we fixed every single road crossing we went across, we would be broken, wouldn't exist. Um, the damage, or I like to call it wear and tear, is kind of part of the, of the, it's the, the bad part of having the good, the snowmobiles come in. Um, trying to think of a better way to word that, but it's the ri, it's the risk versus benefit. Unfortunately, there is some wear and tear with plowing our roads, but we still do it, right? Um, so can I say we would fix everything? Absolutely not, that would make a promise that I can't keep. Uh, but I would certainly do my best to try to sit down with the local club and determine, um, the best way to fix it. Now, the difference between over by, um, where you're talking about where it crosses, um, over by the block road there, what's that road called?
That Union Street.
Proudy Drive. Um, that is, that's one concentrated spot where the snowmobiles go over in the same area. Um, and it's also on the main trail. This would be a feeder, so it would be getting less traffic, 'cause it's just people coming down to the businesses. And they'd also be spread out over, you know, the, the snowmobiles are not gonna be in the same exact spot on the road every time. And also, when they get into the Vista Parking Lot, or the Wendy's Parking Lot, they might go to Wendy's, they might go to Hoagie's, they might go to Rite Aid. So it's gonna, it's gonna split it up, and you won't notice it as much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Shenat, may I ask a question?
One second, I wanna give Anne Shalow, and then we'll go back to, we'll go back to Margaret after. I was gonna go to Anne first, and then.
I was just gonna suggest that before you, um, vote on this, now that we have the additional information about the houses being twenty-five feet from, uh, the snowmobiles, that, um, you put a snowmobile twenty-five feet from the city coun, each of you city council members' house. Let it run for five to ten minutes, um, per day, thinking maybe that's about how much time it's going to do it, uh, when it's, when you've got five or ten of them coming down, or more, per day. Even more, probably. Um, and, and see whether or not you can tolerate the noise. Because why should you ask citizens to tolerate a noise that you might find offensive if it was twenty-five feet from your house at eleven o'clock at night, and you were trying to get to sleep, or you had babies that were trying to get to sleep? So I, I think you should experiment with that before you take a vote.
Um, I'd like to respond, my neighbor has snow machines, and they do run them. They go up through the woods, they're right across the street, and they go, that's how they get, they don't go down the street, but they, they're right across the street from me, and they go in part of the street to get into the woods, to go to the VAST trail. So I have heard the snow machines running. Um, and they don't run at eleven at night. And I believe the proposal from Mr. Goslin was that they would not run, the trail would be closed at certain hours at night.
Yeah, that's an option, and the city can set that curfew.
Is that something he mentioned in his presentation, that that would be, this, this feeder trail would be closed after a certain hour at night?
I thought he was saying eleven P.M. to six A.M., uh, last time, but I, I'm wrong.
It, it can be adjusted however.
It can be adjusted. But as far as hearing snow machines, yes, I've heard them, my neighbor, um, and they had their snow machines. They don't have them now, but they did, and they had like four or five. And they would start them up, and they would go into the woods. One actually, down the street from me, would go every day using a snowmobile for a while, up my street to go to work. And so that's how he made a shortcut, going up the street into the woods to go to work, instead of driving his vehicle in the wintertime. So I, I have heard the noises of snow machines going by my, my house. I can't speak for anyone else, and I just wanted to let you know that I have heard that. Can I go to Margaret first, and then Jillian?
Fine, I'm just speaking for my husband again, because it, it reminds me of something about the damage on the streets. And I understand that the snowmobiles, um, do, are on the VAST trail now. And he is concerned about the damage that is done now. And he said, well, what they bring into the city will outweigh the damage. Well, already, they're damaging our street, and they're not coming into the city. And he wondered who's paying for that. So that's one thing, as a taxpayer, my husband is very into the bottom line. The other thing is, he said, if the snowmobiles go down, not one paw like leaves your house and goes wherever it comes back. This, whatever snowmobile or groups of snowmobiles, we all know, you know, we all snowmobile, and it's fun, and there's not one person that goes, it's usually group, it's, it's social, it's fun. And so if the snowmobiles come into Newport, they have to go out. So that road on Broadview, yes, it's an access road. But they're coming in, and when they come in, they gotta go out. So that road will have, I would expect a lot of use, and a lot of wear and tear. So that's just my, and mine.
Right, no, no, it's Ryan, yes.
Um, what they're proposing, I, I had it measured, it's sixteen hundred feet of pavement, it's not just crossing the road at several points. So basically, what you're talking is running snowmobiles on a road, on sixteen hundred feet of road. And as Margaret just pointed out, there will be significant damage. So it's not just a few crossings here and there, it's, this is the road. This is, these will run on the roads with cars. So I don't really think you can compare it to just crossing over a main road. You're talking about a lot of traffic, a lo, um, and Mr. Goslin, if I'm not mistaken, in the last meeting of December fourth, this, the proposed hours were six A.M. to eleven P.M. with the groomers coming through at night. So I'm not sure how you control when the groomers will come through, because, um, if they have to groom at night, that's a whole other issue. And snowmobiles, I don't know, who goes out at six in the morning snowmobiling? Um, I'm sure people do. Um, but six to eleven was the last proposal, which seems quite a lot to bear for the residents who are twenty-five feet from this.
Do you wanna check in?
Bernie, are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Excellent, just wanna make sure.
Wanted to make sure, and wanted to know if you had any thoughts, since you are a business owner down in the plaza.
Oh, no, absolutely. Um, and first of all, thanks for all the city council members, uh, joining us on Saturday. That was a wonderful event. Um, basically, I'm, I'm proactive, anything that's an economic stimulator. You know that, I've worked with you on dozens of things. In light of, in light of, uh, Walmart, in light of DC Five debacle, um, anything that we can do as a community to offset, uh, the, what's happened through the recession and, and Main Street, to bring any new, uh, players downtown is critical, and I'm, I'm totally supportive. Um, I'm working in collaboration with the city, as you know, on the, uh, the thousand-foot new waterfront path. I think that's been a discussion as part of this VAST, and fully reported. We would love to see people coming in, and I've heard comments about Wendy's, and Hoagie's, and Cinema. We would, uh, work in collaboration with the community to provide parking on the excess parcel next to Vista. Um, I've worked with VAST on several locations. I will tell you this, they're respectful, um, they will, they work in collaboration with the community. And by the way, this, I've heard a lot of concerns, but remember, what I'm understanding, this is not a ten-year deal. This is a one-year pilot project. Nothing's perfect. Uh, but I think the benefits far outweigh the concerns. And I think what we need to do as a community is to work with the concerns through the winter, and ameliorate those, uh, issues that come up. But I think it's incumbent, the, the gentleman from VAST has already commented, he's, um, he's willing to work for the community, there's a lot of activity. I think it's worth doing, and I, and I highly promote it. Um, the new machines are quieter. Um, I, like I said, I've worked in several locations, and any issues that come up, they quickly address. Um, I think the community has stated that if there's any damage, the VAST will be responsible. So I, I think it's an appropriate measure to try on a pilot program. For, for a year, I will commit whatever I need to do as owner of the shopping center and part of your downtown, uh, with the path, with parking, and collaborate. Anything that we can do to provide that to happen. It's just, it's one, it's one metric, it's not the, it's not a fantasy, it's not gonna change the economy, but that would tend. other things will. So, I, I fully, fully support. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay. There's a gentleman in the back over here.
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to tell the council that the idea to bring the Skidoo Trail into Newport should be done. We could discuss this for two more hours. We've got several individuals here that will not talk to anybody by the time we're done. I think the council needs to take a step forward and say, one way or the other, because if you agree to try this for a year, I could guarantee you that we could furnish the individuals to make that very safe. I got one gal right here shaking her head. I'm sorry, ma'am. You give us, you give us...
The high school has an emergency.
Excuse me. You give us one season, and you and I will be talking over dinner.
I doubt that.
I know it. I know what you're saying, okay. But it needs to be tried, folks. Really, this, we could talk about this for a long time, but it needs to be processed through regulations. But the policeman was here last time, he spoke, he's ready to speak to us again. The groomer being out there at night, if the council chooses not to have it there, hey, we'll, we'll cooperate, you know, any way that we can to make this happen.
I was just gonna quickly address the damage issue. When you're talking about a main corridor trail that's been, and probably 70 years old, no, how long's that trail been crossing by the high school and over by the hospital? I mean, if it's been crossed for 20 years, that's how long it took to have damage in a condensed area. So, I know damage is definitely an aspect, but you're seeing it totality, so it's been there for a long time.
Okay. Let's go. I'm gonna go, Jillian had her hand up then, I'm gonna, Eileen after. You had your hand up.
I just want to remind the council that, yes, while the snowmobiles are, are much quieter now, they still are manufactured at 82 decibels. And, you know, if human hearing is impaired and, and hurt at 85 decibels, they may be quieter than before, but there's still potential for harm. I also would like to remind the council that other municipalities and other countries where this has been done very successfully, they set limits to how close snowmobiles can be to people's homes because of damage to the individual's health. And I think that health is an important issue here, and something we can't really put a dollar sign on.
Decibels are a logarithmic scale. 82 decibels is roughly half of 85 decibels. That, that, I'm not denying that you cannot, I'm not saying that you cannot have hearing damage from, from, from close proximity to snowmobile engines, but that, that illustration does not, does not demonstrate that, and...
Well, the reality is, you know, you get more than one snowmobile, then your decibel level goes up. It's not 82 anymore. If you have a whole bunch of them, it's significantly greater, and I did actually check this out with a scientist.
I just wanted to reiterate that I, I don't, I'm not opposed to Vass trails, I have great respect for Vass. My family has, has used Vass trails for many, many, many years. I think it would be very good for the city of Newport. I don't think anyone, almost anyone is arguing with that. And I would be willing to work with Mr. Goslin or anyone else to try to find a different proposal. And if all options are exhausted, then I think we can try it as a pilot, but I don't really feel like we've gotten there yet. I feel like there's still a lot of people upset by this, and in the spirit of being good community members and good neighbors, we should really try our hardest to see if there's an alternative before the city council votes and says, "It's only a year." Because it's only a year for some people, but it could be a very hard year for other people.
Anything else?
I'd like to say something.
Oh, Dina, oh.
I am sorry, and I'd like to consider and respect everybody, but everybody's concerned. You know, you say you get sick to your stomach, and you're scared you're gonna walk your dog. I'd be responsible with the 20 families. This isn't a tomorrow thing, this is a yesterday thing. And I think we have to come up with an alternative that takes everybody into consideration. I'm a taxpayer, substantial taxpayer, I support this Vass trail. You're in a tough position to make this decision, but you're gonna be in a tougher position with no businesses left. Do we need to go look out the window? How much worse is the city gonna get? You, you have to, you have to support this for the businesses that are here. You have got to get behind the businesses that have been behind the city. And like I said, it's not, it's, it's, it's a yesterday thing. You know, and as, as a taxpayer, and I read the paper when I get home late at night, and I read that we're outside looking for outside businesses to come in, and you've got businesses right here saying, "Do something." So, I would ask the support of the council, and again, maybe take a look at a little bit of an alternative, but no pun intended, this is a two-way street. And I don't disrespect anybody, like I've met with Jill, you know, we've, we've gotta address those concerns, but I'm sure that with Chief DeSanto and with the Vass guys, take a look at it. Do something that works. Make it work, make it happen. Make it happen. And there's no reason why that we have to be in this room and have this kind of dissension. We can't afford it. Look at where we live. What are we known for? So, let's work together and make it happen. I'm sure if we have Tom here, if we have Vass here, if we have Chief DeSanto here, you've heard the concerns, you know what the business people think, make it happen. I bet you if we take those routes, and again, it's a two-way street, okay, so maybe we don't go down Broadview, but maybe for how many weeks out of the year, we can use that pedestrian walkway, and you relinquish that, work together to make it happen. Get behind us. Thank you.
Has the route in back to, coming out and back to the Career Center and down over the hill is straight in? Has that been considered? There's not eight, 10, 12 houses on that street? Just as you go into the underpass a little up? Is that a possibility?
Park Avenue? Park Avenue?
Yeah, just runs along this railroad track, goes up...
The other pass.
I mean, if you're on that side of town, I, there's not that many houses there.
Gonna go through North Country and they probably...
I don't think North Country's gonna say too much. You come across the back part of that.
I have no decision-making authority, but I'll certainly bring it up to the powers that big. It depends where you're talking about.
We're talking about coming down here.
School property and municipal property behind you.
Talking about here, yes.
Yeah, you would come up the back end of the football field, up towards the baseball field.
Yep.
And out through there and down over the hill, and then it would be a straight shot in. Now, if you travel up and down the Derby Road all winter, these people are more respectful than some of the, the cars. They stop, they do not go out unless you stop. When they go across, they're signal-bound. If they're to a trigger side, they're, they wave and say, "Thank you." If they were enforced on that route, if something's happened in Airtean now, you could try it by an order. Something happens, can't be done, then you stop it. I mean, I can understand where these people are coming from, right? It's a hard, it's a hard decision.
That was an option, I was wrong. Right. Now, go ahead, Mr. Goslin.
You could do that, but that's fenced in back there.
That's what?
It's fenced in back there. You can't get from the baseball field to that parking lot behind the Career Center. They're fenced there. I know, could I run it?
They can't run it either side of the field?
If you want to go down in front of the high school.
Well, if they went around, no, no, if they went around the outfield part.
Those fields are fenced in.
Yeah.
All of them. I live on Park Avenue.
Well, they have...
Is there a sidewalk?
Just a minute.
No, go ahead. Let him finish, please.
Yeah, that's what I said.
I live on Park Avenue, and I get, my wife and I get 95% of the traffic coming to and from that high school.
Yeah.
And a few more snowmobiles isn't gonna bother us one bit. I'm not gonna come in here and say, "I don't want going by my house," because my living room's 35 feet from the center of the road. But I don't wanna be the one to have all these business people looking at me and say, "Because of you, my business is going down the tubes." I used a snow machine, and I can't do anymore because my wife's back won't take it. But, every event that happens at that high school comes down Park Avenue. I get out of my driveway in the morning to go to work between 4:00 and 8:00. If there's an event in there, we just had an event, an event there Sunday, if I'm up the hill and try to get in my garage to go home.
Yeah.
Those idiots are bumping the bumper, won't even let you in the one driveway. And that's car traffic. But I don't think a snow machine doesn't bother us too much. There's two houses on Park Avenue. If you wanna talk about noise, you all lived there when Los Angeles is go-bolt last night through there on Union Street, you might as well be inside the house.
Either way you go on that side of town, there's gonna be noise. All I'm doing is suggesting a possible route without getting anybody pissed off, all right? I understand that.
Just make, excuse me.
You can't get through there. You can't get through there. Almost feel...
All right, that's fine.
How about, how wide is the, because you don't know how wide that is. How wide's the railroad track? Is it...
Yeah.
No, that is a straight shot.
That's a straight shot?
That's the obvious location, but it's not our prop, that's the obvious place to put it.
It's not our property, that's the issue.
It's an issue of railroad line, that's another issue.
It's only used, I think, once, once a month?
But, it's technically not.
They're still out there.
I would love to put it there, trust me. I'd love to pay to pull the rails up and put it there, and now you have another path in the summer. Really, I would, but, until, and I don't wanna see railroad injury go away, but until that happens, that's not a safe place to put it.
Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I, I feel very comfortable saying that I would imagine by the time the lake freezes and becomes safe, a majority of people are going to be taking that. But for me to put a trail on the lake and say, "This is the way to go to town," and then have somebody go through, is just not, not responsible. So, your traffic will be cut down tremendously when the lake is frozen, and people know that they're getting to the same spot by taking the lake. But to have an official trail that we can make safe to get into the city, and it also allows us to, those, those couple of weeks where the lake isn't safe at the beginning and at the end of the season, they can take it, then, you know, I mean, tonight, I drove up it tonight. Tonight would be a perfect night, because the road's all covered in snow, you wouldn't even know we were there. You could come right into business, and, but people wouldn't wanna take the lake, because it's just, just barely frozen over. So, again, I go back to, let this be a pilot program, let's try it, and, and see how it goes, and you guys have to sign an annual permission slip every year, and quite frankly, if it got bad enough to where there was concern, you could revoke permission. You know, it's not like your hands are tied for a year. So, that's what I'm coming forward with, is, is just to try it out, maybe we can put a little committee together with Eileen, and, but I wanna, you know, like Dina said, this, this should've been done yesterday. I wanna get it started, I wanna see what happens, so that we have things to talk about, because right now, everybody's going on speculation. And I can tell you, I drive through the city a lot more than I want to, trust me, because I live on the other end of the county, and I've looked at these other options, and they're just not gonna work. This, this is the only area where we need to come in and be the least amount of impact on the city.
Listen, it's the council.
In two weeks, but, no, three weeks, but I was having a vote this evening.
Because I, I was gonna say, I mean, if Roger would be willing, I would spend time over the next couple of weeks to, to just, just so everyone feels like they've been heard, to really try to exhaust all options and look at things. I would go to the school, if you would like me to go to the school, to see if they would be interested in any way using any of their property. I'll investigate anything you want investigated. I just feel like, Dina said, we should be working on this together. It's a great idea, but we don't want people angry and hurt. We wanna really be able to come out of this on top.
See, I'm coming at this, I'll say my point of view now, I'm coming at this as, as a pilot project for three months. We're already into December, almost into January now. So, you're really only looking at January, February, because by March, you wouldn't be able to use it. We're really only looking at two months.
You can do that in three weeks. It's gonna rain tomorrow anyway. You may know Vass trails away.
Well, no, but I'm just, that's, he asked for opinions from the council members, well, I'm, I'm gonna state my opinion. I'm looking at this as a, a trial period, is the way I'm looking at it. I also have to look at it, also, I'm looking at it, any way we can try to help the businesses. I mean, we have to do what we can in this community, that's the thing. We have such an economic issue, and I would hate to see us not try, let me get my thought back again, not try something. Because, as Dina said very well, she employs, well, I mean, I don't know how many you employ now, but I look at the number of employees that you employ, the number of employees the Vista Shopping Mall employs, and if we can somehow help the economy, because it's a known fact that these businesses struggle in the winter, and if we can somehow make Newport where it's not just for the summer, where it's year-round. I mean, people mention noises. Have you heard some of the boats coming down the lake? They're noisier than snow machines. I mean, they get those motors going, and you can hear them coming all the way from the border down. And so, I know it's, it's, it's almost like an issue where, where, I could use the term McDaniel, we knew it, McDaniel, if you know. Gonna put me in that, I know in the paper, but that's how it really is. It's like a sticky wicket here. We're trying, what?
Three weeks.
I just, I just think we need to move, move on on this issue and have a vote, so he has some sort of guidance. Go ahead, Stacy.
Hi, I'm Stacy, I, I'm a Newport resident. I think we all need to make sacrifices for what's good. I live next to a company that works 24 hours a day, that makes noise, a lot of noise, beating of trucks, whatever. I've also lived by a train. I've also lived by a snow machine trail. And just, so you know, you do get used to those noises, and you tune them out. Like I said, I live to a company, next to a company that makes noise all night long. I don't hear it anymore. And I know that they're employing people, and that, you know, families are being fed, and they're all tuning out. I throw in an opponent.
Anything else? Did you have, did you have something? Yeah, I do. Oh, okay, go ahead. I'm willing to let Mrs. Luzy have her three weeks, prepare everybody in the room, and people that aren't in the room, to go ahead and approach the school, and if, like Mr. Johnson says, you've got a couple of fences there, if the school be willing to let those fences come down and use that property and come back and let us know. And that would be an alternate route, I would certainly vote for that.
And if we find any other routes? I mean, I, I don't know what Roger's looked at already, but...
Bring everything, bring everything. I can vouch for, I can vouch for Roger, he has looked at everything, because he met with, before this evening came to the council, he met with Public Works, just like I went up, he met with the Public Works Director, he met with the chief, I happened to be at the meeting, and he met with the city manager, so, and we did scour maps to try to find trails, an alternate route. We hadn't thought about the high school, but you think they would actually let some machines go by during the daytime and schools in session? I highly doubt that.
I have absolutely no way to know that. No.
So, I highly doubt that they would allow the snow machines.
I'm a lawyer.
I think it depends where it is, and I, I don't know, I have no idea, but I would be willing to ask for you.
Go ahead, Charlie, and then...
Well, I, I, I just gotta tell you, then, why don't, why don't you vote to approve a plan to be worked out and compromised by such and such a date, and give them a date, January 5th or whatever? Then you've already approved it? Then you've already approved it? They still have time to work on it, if they can find a better plan, they'll do it. January fifth is the deadline date, and you give them a proposal. Instead of bringing it back another three weeks, have another proposal and have it delayed another two or three weeks.
Oh, no, it wouldn't get delayed, if it came back in three weeks, it would not be delayed.
You know, another three weeks, you've just took another month out of the.
Right.
Out of, out of, out of the two months, two and a half months.
I think Mr. Schnatt was out of motion, or?
Nope, well, not quite, but I just have a question for Mr. Goslin. So say we come back in three weeks and approve some option. How long would it take you to get the trail and money?
The only time hindrance would be, one, I'd have to meet with, I'd have to meet with Mr. Burnier again, just to square away exactly where we're gonna go, you know, once we get into the East Side Landing Street area. And then it would, the time constraint would be making signs, you know, I mean, we could technically open the trail and do handwritten signs, but we'd like to make something a little bit more professional and, and obvious. I, I just, you know, I have thought about this since July, or I've thought about this since July last year, you know, it's, there is no other way, I, I see what you're saying, going behind the high school. One, I doubt they'll let it happen, and two, now we're, if we, if there isn't a gate there, yeah, we could make a hole in it, make a passage through, not a big deal, but now we're, we're literally right in the parking lot of the high school, and that just does not seem, that does not make sense to me. The, the, the proposed area that I have chosen is the only route. We can sit there and talk about it for three weeks, that's fine. But I would highly encourage the council to move on this and make a decision one way or the other tonight.
I just have a final comment. When they proposed the bike pathway, we as property owners on that street were given quite the impetus, where we could digest the information and look into it. And, you know, I just took Mr. Goslin's side, and he's been thinking about this since July. The property owners of Broadview Avenue just found out. And quite honestly, I think if the spirit is to work together and to try and find solutions, it would've helped for the property owners to know in advance. And then there is a chance for some open dialogue and some consensus building, and some, you know, really good solutions that could work for people. So part of this is, it's just so sudden, and it's just, we did not even have time to even think about it. And it, it's a hard position to put someone in. You know, we didn't buy our houses to be on the snowmobile trail. And I get it, times change, people change. But people still need time, and they need, they need to be heard. And city residents, we have a stake in this too, a large stake. And I just feel that the residents of my neighborhood were not given enough time to really prepare for this.
Can I make one more?
Go ahead, Mr. Goslin.
See that bright white building up there? That's the storage facility. In the dark line just to the left of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's a really dark line, that's a roof line, no, to the left of it. Right there. There's a fence there and a gate, and if they take that section of fence out, you're not more than ten feet in the storage building, and you're literally going through a classroom to get by there. That, that opens not any wider, it is from this wall to that first window. And that's the only place you could get through there, the left here. And they aren't gonna let that happen, I'll tell you that right now.
I saw our hand over here, and then Tom.
Hi, I'm Michelle, I currently just purchased a home on Broadview. If this does go through, what I would like to see is a better curfew time, and definitely a speed limit for them to go through. I'm not a fan of them coming down my road, but I will be willing to have them try it, but those are my concerns with them, the curfew time and the speed, because we all know snowmobilers can drive fast, and it is a safety concern at times.
Oh, go ahead, Tom, and I was sure that you addressed the sign, the speed and?
Yeah, I mean, we can make any sign you want, and I did propose the ten mile an hour speed limit, which can be easily enforced by the police department, as well as the curfew. The curfew was adjustable, what I threw out there was just an example. And the, as far as I know, and George can correct me if I'm wrong, but that club groom's down through there, they're usually right around dinnertime or something like that, so they're not even, they're not even late at night, but.
We can make it a time to agree with the.
The groomer is very quiet, so the groomer is way quieter than a, than a snow pile moving through. The other recommendation I was gonna, that I just kinda came up with, that I thought might work, is we can put up signs that advertise the lake as an alternative trail, but as long as we have the permanent trail, I say permanent, the proposed trail going down the road, then at least people have the option, if they don't like water, they don't like water crossings, they can take the road. I will put money on it, that over eighty percent of your snowmobilers will take the lake once it's safe. But I just hate to see that, that be the only alternative. Yeah, so.
Tom? We've met a few different times and, and talked about this and looked at alternatives. As Jim said, I've been over by the high school. I, I, I honestly, the school wouldn't allow it if there wasn't enough room, because you're going right through the middle of that driveway too, on the left side of that building. We've looked at other avenues, this, this is it. I would, I would suggest that the city, that you give them an access, allow them to do this, vote on it, and if we can find an alternative in the process, so be it, we can change it. Otherwise, they're gonna lose half the season.
I have one more thing to say. When I was doing the first edition of East Side for buses, it was like, I feel, this was how many years ago? Twenty years ago, and I had to come down here and say, "Oh my God, please, can I have buses?" Everybody thought, "Oh, it's gonna be a terrible thing, buses on the streets." I'd like to think that overnight, that we're gonna have thousands and thousands of snowmobilers, it's not gonna happen like that. We're gonna get some increased traffic. And again, it's, it's a two-way street. We've got to open our minds to allowing business to come in here. You have the power to stop it. The people that are in this room with concerns can come back to this room, but give it a chance to happen. Twenty years ago, I came down and said, "Please let buses come to the restaurant," and we worked it out. Yeah, we have some buses, but I don't think it's anything that really, I mean, we are in a zone up here. Look at where we're at. You've gotta consider the businesses that are supporting this community also. So again, I would ask this council to get behind the businesses that are behind you and give it a chance. You have the opportunity to change it if it doesn't work. We have the opportunity to go back. Like Roger says, if they haven't access on the lake, they're probably gonna use it, and everybody's like, "Oh, it's gonna be dangerous." These guys don't wanna wreck these machines that cost this much money going down that street. Give us a chance to do business.
I remember the bus issue.
It was about, it was twenty years ago, and what, twen, I, I said, "Do I gotta go back down to that council room and say, 'Please, can we do business here?'" "We are here." "We are here with best interests, support us." "And we'll figure this out," but it's not tomorrow, it's yesterday. The market study, we're right here asking you.
Okay. So, someone on the council room to make a motion at this time?
I think you have a motion.
Do we have one?
That's how you opened your comment.
Was there a, well, did you formally make a motion?
No.
No.
Are you talking about, are you talking about my comment?
No.
No.
There was no motion, there's no motions.
Okay.
What is your?
I thought that someone had made a comment and seconded it in order to get the public comment.
No, I just opened it up, I wanted to do it, because I wanted to give, I wanted to give Mrs. Stanford plenty of time to present, because she had asked, you know, emailed, and said that she would have, you know, and so, I just opened it up. So.
I have one more question.
Yes.
So, two weeks ago, when you were here, Mr. Goslin, I think you had said that it would be great if you could continue the trail across the railroad bridge, so that people could get downtown. Thinking about having the trail go behind Vista on the new path and across the railroad bridge, and then perhaps having a little parking area in Carmelo Park to avoid the state property. I would be much more inclined to support the whole part and parcel if people could also get downtown. Has that been considered thoroughly?
Yeah, absolutely, it's, it's doable. I can't speak necessarily for going behind Vista, because I have not gotten permission from the Carmelos to use that, and, you know, obviously, it's not wide enough to be groomed, it could, it is wide enough, I went down there and walked it to be a single-track snowmobile trail. But no, my goal is to get snowmobiles across that bridge, and that's just as easy as laying something, something down to protect it, so that we don't have any issues.
Hey, Ernie, could I put you on the spot?
Yes.
What's your feeling of snowmobiles coming down and going behind Vista? If it be a one-way, a one-way, you know, to somehow, to help them to get, you know, beyond Vista to downtown?
Oh, that's, that's fine. I, it, the gentleman that spoke about this is right, I think he needs like a twelve-foot wide, this would be that, but.
Right.
I, I think, I, I said, Paul, I'd be more than happy, I mean, we worked in collaboration with you and the community to provide that for the community. It's not a walking path in the winter. It would provide, if it was a one-way, you know, program for Bass, I would be highly supportive of that.
Single-track is just the term. Single-track, not one-way, but it would be not, not groomed, because the groomer needs.
Correct, that's right. I'm not a snowmobiler, so I don't know all this terminology.
But that is my ultimate goal, I just didn't wanna get too deep into it without even getting access into the city in the first place. So, yes, that is my goal for sure. And I'll, I mean, that's, we're talking about private property, and then the city owns the bridge, right? So I would only have to be dealing with the, the private property owners, the Carmelos, and the city to get to that section.
What would it take? What would have to go down on the bridge to protect the planking? I know you've done that on other bridges.
That's not plowed in the winter, right?
No, it's not.
So.
Oh, it's not plowed? Oh, okay.
It's not plowed, but I would still, I'd have to measure it and get quotes and figure out what it would cost, but, and I'm also volunteering the club to do something that they haven't agreed to yet, but yeah, I mean, we, we wanna make sure that we protected it, or, or it was a strict trail closure was put on it, if, if it becomes bare, we wouldn't wanna run snowmobiles down on bare wood. So, I'd do just something as simple as putting plywood down. Otherwise, there's something waterproof.
Okay, so, there was no motion made at all, then? Okay, I just wanna make sure. With all that, does someone wish to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, this is a tough one. But I would like to make a motion that we go ahead with this proposal as a trial basis, because we have to support business. I mean, if we don't, we're not gonna have a talent ventilator. So I would support that. Still with Mr. Goslin, working with Eileen, just to see if there's any, any other alternatives. But this is like three months. If it doesn't work, then we can always take back what we did, but I, we, we need to support businesses. So I'm gonna make the proposal, we go forward with this, working Mr. Goslin of Bass with the Chief, with Tom.
Okay, so a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
May have been seconded. Discussion.
What do they, is the proposal, do you have to articulate the hours of operation or what? Closing it down, or are you also making a motion on ten miles an hour?
I'm making a motion to go forward with a proposal, but we have to work out the other issues with the Chief, Mr. Goslin. And, yeah. Part of that, I would think that eleven o'clock is too late, personally.
Right, there'll be.
But that'll have to be worked out with. But the first step is to go forward with it.
Mr. Schnatt just whispered in my ear, which is true, there's gonna be an MOU, a memorandum of understanding, and within that whole MOU would be spelled out, the speed, the time, I'm correct, right?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, I'm looking at Laura's.
It's, it's, there's a spot on the permission slip for you guys to put in any, and towns do it all over the place, so you just put in the conditions that you want. It just, the most important thing is that I have somebody to work with on this, that I don't have to keep going back to the city council meetings, and I don't enjoy them, but.
Eileen?
Instead of a procedure of that council, you said who would be responsible for setting the conditions?
We, the city council, working with the recommendation of our Chief of Police, and Public Works Director.
For an open meeting, or are you just gonna kinda do it, or, I'm just curious what the process is?
Well, once it's approved here, it's, we, it would be done at a council meeting. We have to have faith, we have to have faith in our, we have to have faith in our.
Can we delegate, can we specifically delegate it as part of the motion?
That's what I mean, it would possibly be council.
Oh, you wanna delegate it?
I think that would be appropriate in a certain.
I'm just curious what the process is.
Oh, okay, I thought you were, okay, the process would be that.
Forward with an MOU.
There's an MOU that's worked out, memorandum of understanding that's worked out between Bass and the city. During that process, the Chief will be involved, the Public Works Director will be involved, the City Manager will be involved, working with Mr. Goslin.
And then I would also add, once that MOU is completed, it comes back for the council to give the final blessing, saying, "This is good." Go forward.
So if any citizens had any concerns about the MOU, maybe be able to raise those concerns at the next council meeting, where the council voted on the memorandum of understanding?
Okay, yeah, now in the same.
Just the process question.
Yeah. Way to grind, there's some, way to grind behind you. Did you have something else?
Your own.
I'm just curious if the residents on Broadview would have any understanding of what the protocol or the conditions are, since it will affect us the most. I want to know if I have any opportunity to have any discussion for input as a resident.
Is there any more that wasn't mentioned tonight?
Well, I'm just saying, if, if you're going to decide on time and hours and speed limits, I wanted to know if I could have input into that process, being a direct abutter of this trail.
Is there anything different than you've already mentioned, your wishes at this meeting?
Well, I.
Yes, I think the time.
The times.
It's a timeframe, she should have some to put with the Chief.
The time, the speed, the signage. The.
Ten o'clock is pushing it, nine o'clock tomorrow.
I'd like to go over a little more of the insurance piece, liability for property owners.
I'm not going across your property.
Well, in the, in the case that someone, you know, if you, potentially that could occur, if, if there's vehicular traffic and things, or the snow pile and the snowmobile, I mean, someone could get up on someone's property, I, I just wanna know what happens in those cases, that's all.
Chief? Let me, let me, the Chief has his hand up, let me let the Chief speak.
I mean, this is respectfully as possible, and Mr. Wilson, I concur with your motion. But why are you leaving this in my hands to make the decision? You guys are the elected officials. I'm fine with the eleven PM to six AM, it seems to work at other places throughout the city. But I'm gonna have a pile of people coming in saying, "What gives you the authority, Chief? You're not an elected official for the city." And I just, I just don't know, ten miles an hour seems completely reasonable to me. I, I don't think anybody would argue that it should be less, or I don't think anybody would argue it should be more either. The only thing that I don't understand in this MOU is what are going to be the hours of operation? And I, I, there's no public safety buy-in for me to make that decision, I don't, I think if it were eleven PM to six AM, that's completely fine. I don't have a person who would have concern about that. And I'm not trying to shuck my responsibility, I, I would accept it if you give it to me, I just don't know why, I, I don't think I have the proper purview for that, so.
I have a suggestion. So, once we vote, if it goes forward, then we can make another motion proposing those details, the speed limit and the hours.
They'll have to approve the MOU anyway. And there's already an ordinance on the city books, and there's always ordinance that there will be none of that stuff between 11:00 and 6:00 a.m. The city already has an ordinance for that.
Right. Because we always, we have to waive it when they have a relay for life. So, okay, we have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? Quick, Brian.
Yeah, I just want, now this, your motion is strictly on the proposed access right now, not the alternate?
There isn't an alternate.
There is no alternate.
Okay, so it's on the proposed one now.
I said the proposed route.
That was his motion.
Though if Eileen is still willing to work with Roger to explore other routes, I would love to see that happen.
Okay. Are we ready to vote? And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposition? The motion carries.
So I didn't, I don't know how everybody voted.
It was unanimous.
I voted reluctantly.
I wanted to abstain at first when I did.
So it's four, four no.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I suggest copying what Island Palm does and doing 11:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. For a curfew and 10 miles an hour speed limit? And that would be the conditions of the trail. You hopefully would approve that. I would give the, and you're giving their, whoever needs to sign the permission slip can sign the permission slip and we can get going on this ASAP. Because if you wait till next meeting to sign the permission slip, then that's, I'm not putting snowmobiles on your city streets until I've got that permission slip signed because that's your release of liability.
Does someone care to make a motion as far as the curfew hours? And the speed limit, like you recommended?
Sure, I'll do that. So I'd like to make a motion that the curfew, that there be no snowmobiles on Broadview from 10:00 p.m. until 8:00 a.m. to avoid the morning school traffic. And that the speed limit be 10.
So the motion is to, basically you have a curfew from 10:00 p.m. to 8:00 a.m.
Yes.
Which is the curfew. And the speed limit to be 10 miles, 100 miles an hour. Is there a second to that motion?
I will second that one.
Motion seconded, now discussion. This gentleman will be having his hand up first and then I'll go to you.
Just a clarification, from what I understood, was just noted on, was that a memorandum of understanding was going to come to the council in three weeks. And then based off of Mr. Goslin's comment, is Bass, and this is just for the whole body, is the Bass trail going to be up and operating immediately? Or does it have to wait for three weeks? And I just say this for clarification purposes because I'm confused as to that old roundabout thing that just.
Yeah, thank you. My, Mr. Mayor, my goal in having you make another motion with the conditions is so that this can get up and going sooner rather than later. I'm not saying that it's going to be up and going tomorrow because local trails are closed still. But no, I would rather not put it off to the next meeting.
Correct. They already voted on to go ahead with the trail. Now they're going to vote on the conditions. Once that's done, you can open tomorrow. You get your conditions.
The chief proposes. Or is that, is that your, was that your intention, to direct city, the employed city officials to make this agreement effective immediately?
That is my intent, yes.
And it's a 10:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m.?
10:00 p.m.
I'm a 10, 10, 10:00 p.m. 10:00 p.m. to.
I mean, we're bringing, we're bringing them through residential area. You're still younger than I am. I go to bed at nine, so give you until 10:00 before. But I'd like to say one thing, just to answer one other question. I don't have a snowmobile trail, but I live on a main route out of here. And for listening to Harley's drive-through all hours of the night, it was frustrating. So you know what my response was? I closed the front window so I don't hear them now. Turned the fan on.
I can concur with that, I just want to make.
Go to this gentleman and then go back to.
My question, my motion that was specific to Broadview, so in other words, if I were to take the lake to avoid going to our own houses and go to dinner at, let's say, Lago, I have to still be out of town by 10:00? Or are you saying if I go on the lake, I'm okay?
The lake is not safe, Paul. You can do whatever you want.
That's just Broadview Street. Just Broadview.
So then clarify Lake Street. So it seems like if you come around.
Landing Street?
Landing Street.
Yeah, okay.
So you may have a little broader opportunity on Landings, Landing Street. So if you choose to access the water to get back on the trail, that scenario that you described would work for you if Landing Street had a wider expanse of availability, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I haven't seen any opposition from Landing Street specifically here tonight, no.
No one lives on Landing Street?
Yes. Did you have something else?
I would, I would like to suggest that the curfew be 9:00 p.m. Well, I believe my neighbor also, Michelle, believes that 9:00 p.m. is the correct curfew for our street. And I can tell you right now that most of my neighbors would also agree. Yeah, I have a lady who just shut in. I have an older gentleman who lives on the road and, yeah.
My suggestion for 10 is a compromise for you. As it ordinarily would be 11:00, and I'm saying 10:00 so that you don't have to hear anything between 10:00 and 11:00. And my expectation is that there aren't going to be that many people traveling that dead end. It's not a throughway. Can't get anywhere outside of downtown from there. So the number of snowmobiles that would actually be traveling on Broadview from, well, really any time of the day, but especially I would think after dark, would be pretty minimal. So I would love to hear if you find that there is way more than expected. I'd love to hear you back here sometime mid-winter.
Nina, what time do you vote on?
10:00. On weekends.
Well, people down to eat and dinner on their street at 10:00 o'clock, hell, they're going to get out there if they can't go on the trail. So I don't think you want it any less than that. You got to give them a chance to get out, haven't they?
I think the 10 is a compromise. It's a compromise.
I understood you to recognize that Landing Street could go till 11:00, just Landing Street. So if they can travel on ice, they have that option. Just that would be in that MOU.
The usual city arguments would apply.
Okay, so a motion made, seconded. Just anything else, Mr. Goslin?
No, for this part, but I'm still unclear on one thing. Are we going to allow them into Carmelo Park? I mean, that has been suggested and.
Well, I mean, as long as my hindrance is the city street, so as long as I can get through those and get into, you know, Dina's property and get behind there, then I can work with Mr. Carmelo to figure out the logistics of that.
We're not worrying about downtown just yet.
No, I mean, I suppose I'll have to come back. If I get to the railroad bridges, I'll have to come back for your permission to do that.
All right, then, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have three ayes and one no.
That's on the time and.
On the time.
It's also the fact that you can go ahead and start that tomorrow. It was already stated. You were told that you'd be up and running tomorrow, once you've gone ahead and voted on these hours. Which means you've taken the MOU out of the hands of all these people here if they won't say anything. And that I'm not adhering to, and that's why I voted against it.
But I think as far as when it comes to the MOU, all the concerns raised were discussed. There wasn't much more as far as the MOU goes. The biggest concern was the speed limit and the hours.
You guys just outlined the MOU.
Right, we basically just outlined the MOU by setting the hours from, you can't go after 10:00 p.m. at night before 8:00 a.m. And the speed limit will be 10 miles per hour. And then that's basically the issue, that was the remaining issue I foresee with the MOU.
Yeah, I don't, you basically approved the MOU at all. The paper you signed just came out. Something to have in hand.
I was just going to say as a club resident, this isn't a one and done. So if you find that some particular piece is not working, you know, somebody from town, whether it be the chief police or the department of public works can come to the club resident or whoever it is and say, hey, can we work on this component? And we will. Because ultimately you want landlords to be happy because as the time goes, it gets better and better gradually.
Which I know, I know that Bass does work with landlords, and I know a certain landowner up in Derby who's having issues. And they called Bass up and Bass immediately took care of the issue. Immediately took care of it. They rerouted the trail just a little bit and, and so.
I just have a question about snow removal. Currently the snow is pushed down Broadview where the trail would now come through, and there's a huge mountain of snow there. So I'm curious what the plan will be for snow removal.
The groomer is going to take that snow and bring it out into the, into the trail out in the Prowdy Beach Park.
So it's going to push it north?
We're going to get it right out of the way for you. We're going to help your snow pile situation out and use the snow for the trail. Is that not sufficient?
Well, I'm just curious how it will work. I guess I have to see it.
The groomer has a huge blade to push.
Okay.
There won't be any pile air when we get done.
No.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
I need to move on. The next item is the Newport ambulance FY 1819. Proposal, and we have Charlie Prado and Michael Parag here.
I'm bringing the chair up. I've been standing for, I've been standing for three hours.
Two hours.
Are you not that old?
Thank you, I appreciate your ability to smooth things over. I had a hot look today at Broadview.
Okay. How do you want to, we have a new proposal from, do I have that memo? We have a new proposal from the ambulance. Yes, thank you. Probably have it here, but. They originally had come in and was asking for, what was it, $45,000 as a minimum?
Eighty-five preferably.
They wanted preferably $85,000, and then they wanted $45,000 as a minimum. But now they're recommending $27,000. Twenty thousand, $27,072. We're back and sharpened their answers.
Well, this is after several meetings with all the officials from each of the towns. I'm not sure how many we had, but probably.
Three or four.
Twenty, fifteen, twenty, I don't know, it seems about 20, 30 hours worth anyways.
This was a concerted effort. I have to, I have to just give hats off to Newport ambulance. They worked with us. We also had Coventry and Newport Town President because they also contracted the ambulance. So we sat down as a team. And Charlie and Mike subjected themselves to quite a bit of scrutiny, going through their budget line by line. And we came away from that experience with a great deal of confidence. And again, I want to make sure folks understand, we never questioned your quality. We never questioned that important aspect or, we have a great deal of confidence in the quality in the aspect of this service. And we know it's very important to the community.
And I was going to just add that this increase will allow them to continue the 24/7, having someone at the ambulance garage, I call it garage, the ambulance facility.
It's a used abuse.
I know, I know what I'm calling a garage, because it's much better than where you were, I can tell you that. At the ambulance facility, 24 hours, seven days a week, right? And so.
Same service.
Same service as before.
So what I want to do, I just want to demonstrate what our budget looks like. I've got to take a look at the scenarios. So to bring you back into our budget, because this directly relates to our total operational budget that we're presenting. It's a direct link. When I generated this budget, at the time, we didn't know what Newport ambulance was going to do. So as you can see, I level funded it right across the board. We assumed there would be some increase, but we didn't know what that was going to be. Now that we have the final figures, I just want to show you two things. I want to draw your attention to our recap page. Are you good?
Yeah, just highlighting, just having the numbers.
I just want to show you that this is what we proposed, level funding the budget. This number and this number and this number are the three important numbers. And I want to show you what happens when I add your new number in there. Which is. So I put that number in there, it changes this number down here, but on the recap page, this is what happens to your budget. It changes by 0.89. Oops. It changes this number by, again, $27,072. So no less than a percent on your overall increase, which is something that I'm pleased with. Again, we talked about the impact of the budget and we came forward with what we call a level funded budget. And that means no increase in services, but no cuts in services either. So those are the numbers that I wanted to point out to folks with the new number in there.
And they used a conservative grant list.
We used a conservative grant list, and that's really important to emphasize that this number is likely to go up. I don't know how much it's going to go up. We should find out in the next week or two?
No.
Well, we've got another over a month of appeal.
But don't they give you a number?
Last time I heard the count, it was still 90 appeals, so I don't think the groomer.
But don't they give you a number? Doesn't property valuation still have to give you a drop dead date and a number per that date?
No, they've sent their cooperative, their favorable CODs and everything in already, got that today. They're all set. What this is going to do, if it winds up higher than 315 million, well, the rate will adjust down a little bit. We started the reappraisal with 321 million. I can't tell you how far down it's going to go because we don't know until this is all over. I don't think it's going to go down $6 million, I'll tell you that.
Not from what I've seen. I've been typing up the final reports, I don't think it's going to get down that much.
Some of the property are going down. I don't think you're going to see a million dollars.
But you did use, what I want to stress was you used a conservative grant list.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's all based on 315 million.
So the other number that I want to show you. So the other number that I want to show you, again, based on the three fifteen, the difference in your tax rate, that's what you're looking at right now. This is anticipated based on what we know about that number, we just articulated. This is based on that number as well as the increase in the ambulance. And I'm, I'm, I'm advocating for the council to move forward with the ambulance's proposal and enter into an MOU for 2018 based on any numbers. My reason for advocating for that is, um, if we don't, and they go to appropriation, they're naturally gonna ask for the higher amount of a hundred and eighty, a hundred and eighty-five thousand. This allows the city to control it, it also continues the MOU, which I think is really critical. It's, it's important for you and it's important for us to move forward with that level of confidence.
As was stated in the meetings that we had, the, the lending institution for the ambulance, when they buy new ambulances, they much prefer that the ambulance have MOUs with the municipalities versus just appropriation, because it helps with your, I guess it helps with your credit and your borrowing, and you have to borrow to purchase a new ambulance. And you said the bank really stressed that they wanna do that, enter in the contracts.
Two years ago, without a contract, they, they refused to give us one. And I suggested that we blow up your contracts. They had some changes, though, we've done business with them for a lot of years. Wasn't because we never made our payments, it's just, uh, different people came in, they scrutinized our financial things a little differently, and they said they didn't want our, we were basically at the whim of the voters, and on and on and on, and anyways, you know, we had contracts with the five other towns that we deal with, so, um, made a huge difference last year when we finally got everybody to enter in with contracts. We don't wanna go backwards, which is part of why we came back with this program. And we, you know, we all work together. We're all in this community together. I don't wanna see the quality of the ambulance service go backwards, which anything less than this, I mean, we're gonna be really squeaking it to get to this point. Our people are not gonna get the raise that we had anticipated, we're gonna have to pay it off. I feel a little bad about that. So we've given up things, some equipment that we're probably not gonna buy unless we get a grant. I feel a little bad about that. But I mean, we, you know, there's give and take all the way around. But the contract with the towns is, is almost essential for us to move forward and be able to purchase ambulances, and we need to purchase ambulances as well. And I, I appreciate all the work that all the towns did, because I was at all of these things too, and I know, I, I sent them lots of homework, and so it wasn't just the meeting time that we were spending there, but there was an awful lot of stuff that was, um, gone over in and out of the meetings. And I, 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 you know, I appreciate it. My board, we spent four hours coming up with this new thing.
Yeah.
Trying to scratch our heads on where we're coming from.
It's so appreciated because now it allows us to take a unified approach. And that gives a sense of security for the people who need the ambulance service, and that was the ultimate goal, coming away from this exercise.
I, I got fairly favorable response from the other two towns once with these things. I'm not, you know, getting back to that.
Questions from council members? Um, go ahead.
So you said no raises for staff, and you're not buying some equipment. Are there any other changes you've had to make to accommodate this lower figure?
We, we, we took, we had a donation this year that we were gonna put into a future fund for ambulances and stuff like that, which had not, we, we actually received that, believe it or not, um, two weeks ago?
Yeah.
So, very recent. Um, so it was not in, I mean, we didn't have any knowledge of it, it was not in the original budgets. Um, and we're putting a little more than half of that into our, if you saw our new budget, into our...
Operation.
Operation. Instead of holding it back, which, and that's a discussion we had too. Don't you guys ever keep any capital reserve? And I said, no. We have a fifty thousand dollar line of credit, and we've always been able to bounce back and forth, and we were hoping, we got a, the donation was forty...
Forty-three dollars.
Forty-three dollars. Forty-three dollars. Forty-three thousand.
Well, I'm used to the forty-three dollar, when I saw the forty-three thousand, I was like, what?
Uh, one thing that I want everyone to know in the room too, that hurt the ambulance was the state caution. They implemented a...
Provider.
A provider tax, which added eighteen or twenty thousand to their costs. So it's based upon...
Three, three percent of our, of our receipts.
Three percent of their receipts, they have to pay to the state of mind. It's called a provider tax. And they, they made the ambulance do it. I found out that the DNA has to do it, all these organizations, and it's something that the state put through. So...
Caution.
And that, that they weren't expecting.
We didn't know anything about it, I mean, we...
And I was like, and Meg Markoff, who was at the meetings for Coventry, said, yep, the state did that.
Well, they told us. I mean, we knew it could possibly happen, but then there was some deal where we were supposed to get it back.
And you're not getting it back.
So we're not getting it back. Neither is the hospital, and neither is...
Yeah.
So, so they, they did, however, provide us with the tax.
But you're not getting it back.
They just didn't provide us with the means to get it back.
Like they said you were supposed to get it back.
Yeah, they told us it was gonna have a net effect on, you know, net zero effect on our budget.
So that's a cost shifting from the state, just like the Fed's cost shift to the state, the state's cost shifting to the local municipality.
And, and, uh, the federal government, uh, put a mandate on any new ambulances going forward for, don't quote me exactly, but let's say, the, the current stretchers and the locking mechanisms that we have for, for an ambulance would sustain a rollover with somebody up to three hundred and fifty pounds, and the new federal guidelines that they decided they were gonna put out, they had to sustain a rollover for somebody to go over four hundred pounds, eight hundred, eight, is that what it is? Okay, okay. So, um, our twenty thousand dollar stretcher and our fifteen thousand dollar mechanism to go into the ambulance, that we could take out and use on any new ambulance going through, became obsolete. So the new ambulances, we've lost us about forty thousand dollars more for that. I mean, it's just, you know, and we tried to, and we, we actually had a little more revenue this year, which helped sway part of that off. But, um, through about forty thousand dollars, that's where we're at. Basically, those two items were...
Okay. So we would need a motion to enter into a, a contract with the Newport ambulance?
To renew.
Renew the contract?
To renew the contract.
At the one thirty-two, two oh five, is what we need a motion for.
I have one more question. You have committed to applying for grants?
Yes, we have, we have already applied. And Laura's gonna hook us up with somebody else that thought we moved.
I'm in the, uh, second round of USDA grants. Uh, I've gotta provide more, there's always more documentation to provide, so I'm finishing that up probably tomorrow. And that'll help us with some of the equipment. Uh, we have, for the last three years, put into the fire, uh, what do you call it, American Fire Grant, uh, thing for new truck, uh, three percent of whatever, millions of dollars that they put into that granting process goes towards EMS services, so it's highly competitive. We've made it through several rounds last year, we're hoping this year we'll make it through several more, but it's a long process before you actually see your stuff coming for us.
And a lot of those grants are, like, the one we're trying to get now is a little over fifty thousand. That would buy the equipment that we wouldn't be able to buy. We have to put some money into it too. Why we were keeping that other money, 'cause that twenty thousand that we still have could be applied so we could get that. So that we're...
And some of the grants too, they, they, some of the grants, not only they look for cash, but they look for in kind of...
Well, we're hoping the designation that Newport just received, or, or has received, will help us, so.
The USDA grant, you have to, will only cover a maximum of fifty thousand dollars for exit. And that's a percentage wise, based on what, where in the REAP area you are. Uh, usually with Newport, it depends on the year, we're forty-five to fifty-five percent. So we have to spend well over a hundred thousand dollars to get the fifty thousand.
Well, what's a new ambulance cost now?
No, that's, that's just for cardiac machines.
That's just for cardiac machines.
New, new ambulance depend, you can get anywhere from a hundred and forty to whatever you wanna spend.
Two fifty.
We, we usually do the lower end.
Right, right. Okay. Mr. Wilson, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and renew the contract with Newport ambulance service, uh, increasing the amount from a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two oh five.
Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. Any other discussion?
I'd like to thank the, uh, the city manager and everyone at Newport Ambulance for, for having been open-minded and coming together and working this out. Um, and I hope that, especially in the, in the already discussed grant applications, that we can, we can work together going forward and, and be, uh, be allies for by this great service. So I'd like, thank you, thank you to everyone again.
I'd like to extend your thank you to Seth, Jamie, Jim, Becky, uh, who else was it? Mr. Wilson, the mayor.
Great.
We spent a lot of time in the test to how hard the L were to work.
Your last meeting was four hours, three hours? The last...
You have to have that.
I'm like, yeah, but sites like, oh, wow.
Between here and our meeting, it was a very long day for us.
Okay. Did you have a question, Brian?
Uh, yes. Um, I'd like to ask, I, I had to use the ambulance for my wife when she was sick quite a few times, so I appreciate the ambulance service, and I appreciate the service. However, uh, I'm, I'm gonna ask questions that nobody else wants to or doesn't wanna get into, but unless I have to go through the Freedom of Information Act, can you tell me on ambulance calls, how many were drug related, alcoholism, and domestic? And, and this would be Medicaid, which is not Medicare, it's Medicaid, and that's my taxes. And how much would that be in that budget that they handle? Because I'm sure there's more drug, drug use that goes to that hospital and ambulance service, a regular person or, uh, that lives here, or even an older person. And, uh, we're paying for that. The taxpayers paying for that. And, uh, and that's...
Okay, we got the gist of the question.
I can't answer it. Mike?
What, Mike?
Well, before you do, I'd like to say, why does it matter? And a, a medical event is a medical event regardless of the cause. It could be a two-year-old who is being babysat by her grandmother who accidentally ingested something from her medicine cabinet. You, I don't appreciate the judgment implied in what your question is.
I'm glad you don't, because nobody else wants to do that.
But, but it gets down to the bottom question though.
It's a legitimate question in the sense of medic, between Medicare and Medicaid, and who pays for that? Medicare, I work for, and I pay Medicare. Medicaid, I didn't have to work, but I'll get Medicaid.
Well...
I can answer it generally and avoid those sort of questions.
Can you do it, well, but the bottom line is, when it comes to Medicaid, there should be no discrimination.
There is none.
No, and that's the way I look at it, there should be no discrimination. The whole issue with Medicaid, as Senator Jeffords, when he was alive, would always say, is the government, the federal government has never funded that portion currently, you know, when it comes to Medicaid.
We, we never asked the question, who's paying for this when we go in?
You're not supposed to.
We never do.
You're not supposed to.
We pick up, we do lift assist all the time, we're getting paid nothing for it. I mean, and that's part of where the city's contribution comes in.
Correct.
For picking up those that you either can't afford, don't have, or it's not covered by the regular medical...
I mean, I want you to answer.
Yes. Okay. Uh, not to get into whether opiate related or anything else, because I really can't do that under, I probably could, but I'm not going to, 'cause I'm afraid of the required stuff, but it, it's no secret, there's an opiate problem in the Northeast Kingdom. Uh, twenty-five percent of our income is through Medicare, which is the federal program. Twenty-five percent of our business appears to be in Medicaid. Uh, the rest of it is private insurance and self-pay, and the rest of the money that we get comes from contracts with the towns. But, uh, we don't qualify any call or anything or, or biased on anything, whether it's opiate, heart attack, uh, stress related, hangman, we, you call, and I know this sounds simple, but I always tell my call, if we get a call, we haul, okay? We go to, it's not our emergency, it's the people's emergency.
Well, I, I might have brought that along. I understand that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that, uh, when you bill, you, you have a billing that you have to bill these people to get you money.
Yeah.
So you know who you're billing.
Yep.
Whether you're billing Medicare, or Medicaid, or private insurance company, or anything else, you're billing this, these people to get the money back.
Mm-hmm.
And I, we're not, I'm not discriminating on how, or heart attacks, or babies, or anything else. I just wanna bring out the difference that taxpayers have to pay because of these different programs that are out there, and which is, which is too bad, and that's what keeps the prices up and, and they keep them going. And it's too bad, but it's, uh, it's all government backed, of course, but it's, uh, and probably nothing we can do about it. But the public should know that this is happening, and it's, uh, and it's, uh, more so in this area.
It's happening, no, I'm gonna cut you off there, it's happening all over the country. The opiate issue is not in Newport Northeast Kingdom. It is a major issue throughout the United States. So for you to say that it's mostly here, no, it's all over the country. It's all over the state of Lamar. Um, and so, and I just wanna let you know that it's not unique to Newport, Lamar. It's not unique here. So we need to have a vote.
Yeah.
Uh, we had a motion seconded, so then all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your hard work.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas.
And keep up the great work that you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you guys for serving. Do you guys ever have a question? Yeah. Just give us a call. I will try to...
Do a tour sometime or something.
Pardon?
Do a tour sometime.
And I do extend, sure.
Wonderful.
Just call Mike. Michael, call. I, I did extend, uh, what, several months ago, to all of the boards to come over and see the facility. We're getting a new roof on, uh, that was another cost that we had to watch for.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you everyone.
Thank you.
Nice.
Okay.
Don't tell my wife. I don't know. I didn't mind. I will. Thank you very much. Work the turkey.
Okay, the next item is budget review and vote. Laura?
So that item of the ambulance was the last remaining detail in our budget. And now that you've resolved this, I, uh, think the budget may be ready for approval. And, uh, Mr. Wilson had a question, I just wanna get to it, so I can answer it for everybody. It was on municipal retire, excuse me, municipal retirement. We had questioned why we're hovering in the one fourteen range in our budget and suddenly shot up to, um, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. You'll notice in the past years, we, um, consistently overspent that line item, our actuals. Well, you have to look at what we budgeted in sixteen, seventeen, and what we actually spent in sixteen, seventeen. And, uh, what we, uh, we know we're gonna overspend that line item. This is a result of a new retirement plan for the police department that's kicked into place. It's also anticipating the maximum amount of employees that the organization could have under its present structure. So that includes supervisor foreman for Public Works, for example. Um, includes, uh, the halftime position for the economic development specialists, assuming that the, um, budget gets passed. Uh, so again, we try to anticipate the figures that we have, the most conservative numbers possible, so that we're not surprised at the end of the budget, at the end, at, at the end of the year. And if there's no other questions, go ahead.
You got a dumb question then? If you know you're gonna overspend, why not raise it a little bit more, so you don't end up... end up overspending?
That's what we did right there. If you look at our past history in that line item, we have what we think is pretty, pretty accurate data.
So you got, what, $8,000 extra right there?
Yep, right there. 139 is what we're proposing based on the structure of the organization.
Right, but your 1617 budget versus actuals is $8,000 more.
You're looking at this number versus that number, yeah.
Correct. Your 1718 budget, you've got a 116, or let's say 117,000.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any idea what the actual is on that, right now?
I'd have to open up my mind. I don't, but I would assume we're somewhere around that, this based on where we are at this point here. And nobody else has any idea off the top of your head, no?
So with potentially two additional employees beyond that, and the standard that we've seen overspend significantly.
We have the D plan as well, which is, you know, the D plan is a higher contribution rate, and we have that, we never have any employees.
Well, if you add, if you add 8,000 to 116, and there's a 124, and to get the police insurance in there, and then move the halftime employee further. That's what, whether that's where.
So you're assuming then that 139,000 is gonna cover without any extra overspending?
Because it's a percent, right? We have to, the employee has to put a percent in, and we have to put a percent in.
But that, but that is a very prudent estimate, based on, on all the changes, or can.
Right, but you also have to remember it's based on current staff. If, you know, staff changes during the year, whether it's a person, you know, could be making a different wage, you know, that plays into it, so it's not always gonna come out exact.
But this year, we did tie it to the salary line items that we budgeted.
We took that retirement and we built that in there.
So you got.
Where it wasn't just to get more of a guess of, you know, where have we been falling on this line item, okay, so we should put this number in there.
What does that mean, 139?
I'm sorry.
Okay, so basically, you've increased it by 23, a little less, 22,000 some odd over last year's budget.
Over the budget.
Right.
If you look at what we've staffed.
Most recent actual.
So.
It's 17,000 over the month.
Should cover it.
That's why we put that number in there.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on the budget? We need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Mr. Shinet made the motion to approve the budget as presented, seconded by Mr. Miriam. Discussion.
One of the other areas where there's a significant increase is in communications, and that's spread out over the budget. But if you look at the number from last year, I think that was 73,000, this year is 89,000. That's a whopping increase. What's that for?
Website. It's for building a new website. And we've gotten a couple of estimates, and once the budget is passed, I'll bring those estimates forward.
Just want to make sure that I may have left, I did leave early the last meeting. So this number includes the city's share of an economic development person?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Which would be basically the NCRC amount plus another 5,000.
That is correct.
Okay. And the benefits, or is that built into that number?
That's built into the total number.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes.
Last year's budget increased by almost three quarters of a million dollars. This year, that number is still in there, and there's an increase of another 58,000. And I know you're calling that level funding, but for those of us who are the payers of the money, that's not level funding. So we've normalized the three quarters of a million from last year and added more to it. For those of us citizens who are paying this, that's a whopping deal.
The biggest issue last year was a loss of revenue, and the council did not want to cut services. That's the bottom line.
That's, that doesn't address my point.
Well, no, but the point is, I think it does. Did you want us to cut services? I mean, last year, I proposed cutting a non-essential rec department. I had my head, I had my head chewed off. I did, my head was on a platter, because nobody wanted to cut the rec. You know, no, Sarah, let me, let me finish, please. Everyone, we lost revenue. We lost 18,000 in this year's budget from the state. The state cut the payment in lieu of taxes by 18,000.
They've also increased our obligation on our salaries.
They also, wait, we just got another permitting, we got another fee increase.
Oh, that's right.
We had another fee increase that's in this budget from the state. We have a new permit fee that's in this from the state. And so.
You know, something that is.
But let me go back to last year. We had a loss of revenue, and it was either, do we cut the police? I don't think we should, especially with the issues. I mean, everybody knows we have that, the opiate issue and many other issues facing the community. Do we cut the plowing of the streets? Do we cut, and then, so when you lose revenue from the state and cost shifting, look at the four ambulants, I mean, they had the $20,000 increase that all of a sudden came from the state. We're seeing more cost shifting, and it's come, so that was the big thing last year.
We understand how you got to those figures, but for those of us who are paying it, there is a limit to how much more blood you can squeeze out. Many of us are on fixed incomes.
Well, what would you propose we cut out of this budget?
Where would you propose I bleed next?
Well, no, I mean, would you like us, in my opinion, I'm gonna get my head chewed off again. The non-essential is the rec department. Look at many communities in this area that doesn't even have a rec department. We could cut that. I don't want to, I mean, that would get me going, I don't want to, but I'm just proposing. You know, if you truly want to cut 100,000 out of the budget, we just immediately eliminate all rec programming. Or you eliminate the rec department, but then you still don't cut all the costs, because you've gotta, gotta roll over the maintenance of Garden of Parks, Prati Beach, and the gateway into the public works budget. So you're only really saving, in reality, maybe 80,000, 90,000. So, I mean, if you want, if you want a three quarters of, if you want three quarters of a million dollar cut, you're gonna have to really eliminate police officers, you're gonna have to eliminate public works people. I mean, that is what we.
You're gonna have to eliminate more than rec department.
No, I know.
I haven't looked at where we are in the actual spending on this year's budget. I don't know if Becky has or not, I haven't looked the last couple of weeks. I suspect we're right around 50%. We're gonna, we're gonna, our year's gonna cost us 3.8 million dollars. There's a couple factors that went in that three quarters million dollar increase. There was years of level funding, one, and using surplus to lower the tax rate. If the city hadn't used the surplus to lower the tax rate and gone up at 2.5, 3% increase every year, we'd be in the same exact spot as we are today. That went on for years, and all of a sudden, and I warned the council for years, don't do that, you're gonna come back to bite you. And last year was the year. And if nothing you can do about it, you know, cutting something out of the budget that everybody wants to keep in. And like Paul said, you can tell us what you want to cut, and sure the council will consider it. I mean, I've worked on this budget as much as anybody, and there's nothing in there you can cut. I know it's a lot of money, but facts are fact, and the reasons why we're here.
Charlie?
Yeah, I just, I just don't think it's reasonable for anybody to expect that the council can provide the same services and level fund the budget every year. People need to have raises, health insurance goes up, the cost of electricity goes up, maintenance goes up, the cost of vehicles go up, everything goes up, the cost of ambulance goes up. I mean, I think you guys have done a wonderful job keeping the budget at whatever small percentage of an increase that you have. And I think you do this every year, every year, every year. You know, I don't want to see the rec department go. Think you got an opiate problem now? Don't give your kids anything, see what happens then.
No, I know, basically.
So, I mean, that's, just me, it's, it's not realistic. For the people that sit out here, I've been up there, I know what it's like, for the people that sit out here, the criticism, and I understand it's tough all over, but to expect you guys to pull some magic, you know, money tree out of, out of the air, and still provide all the services that they would complain about if you didn't provide them, it's just not unrealistic. I think you've done a great job.
And the one thing I always like to stress, too, that we face, unlike our neighbor Derby or the other communities, 25% of the grand list is non-taxable. 25% the schools, the hospital. The state doesn't pay, we get a small pilot, but that's the first thing that they want to cut in Montpelier. I know every year I get down there and I say, don't cut pilot, don't cut pilot.
They did cut it.
They did cut it, unfortunately it didn't work, it didn't work this year. They cut it. That's payment in lieu of taxes. So, but when you have 25%, you have, we have a county seat, and 25% is non-taxable, and everybody's, you know, wants the services, that hurts us, and that's, that's the big issue. Truly is. Eddie, go ahead. We had a motion and a second. Anything else?
True, true level funding is a 1.8% a year increase. This is a decrease in real terms.
Right.
And if had previous councils seen fit to make responsible approximately 2% or 2.5% a year increases for the past decade, we would be in almost exactly the same situation. It is an optical illusion that there was that large of an increase in effect.
And I know Laura's predecessor kept warning about the, he kept warning, John did, about the reserve fund. It's gonna run out someday.
We almost did last year.
Almost did. And that reserve fund, what's there now, is what, is even less than what the auditor recommends, in case you have a natural disaster where you have a major crisis.
Well, one thing.
It's half of what they recommend.
And there was no offset proposed in this particular budget. We were able to add about $20,000 to it in this last, this one-year audit. So that's another plus about this budget, is you can start to right that, right the ship. In other words, you're not having to go into your offsets for this budget, which is really a good thing to do.
Right. Okay. Anything else, then? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on. New business, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Wilson?
No.
Who's your buddy?
Not at this time.
I have no new business, any new business?
No.
Not this evening, anything new?
Nothing.
Anything, no?
Okay.
Okay. Move on. Old business, Mr. Johnson.
No.
Mr. Wilson?
No.
Who's your buddy? The only thing I would say is, the Pomelo, I know Ernie mentioned it, but the Pomelo Christmas party was held this past Saturday up at the Elks, and it was a tremendous success. And I know much appreciation, appreciation goes out to his dad and Ernie and all the Pomelos for, as Ernie told me, that's been funded for, what, perpetu, perpetuity, thank you. He told me that Saturday. And so, it should continue for many years, which is a good thing. Because he said, they've been doing that in Brown for 37 years, and this was year number nine for here.
That's great.
Then the governor came also to it. Yep, so just wanted to say that on the old business. Any old business? Any old business?
Just the next community visit for the Vermont Council on Rural Development has been scheduled for January 17th, and I spoke to Jenny today to start to work out the details. We're gonna try and hold it in the municipal gym again, but that's all I know so far. And under old business, I know you're gonna get to this on number 12, but the Centennial Planning Community Meeting has been canceled for tomorrow.
Back to the, the visit, I just want to say that I was extremely pleased with the turnout, considering we had the snowstorm and the bitter cold, and I think for the community dinner, they had about 140, and you did a great job on that. And the sessions that I attended were very well-attended, and I think there were some great ideas. Now, VCRD is compiling everything, correct, from this, all the notes that were scribed, and they're gonna have them up on the wall for people to vote on at the next meeting. And as Paul Carcello says, you could be in elementary school all the way to whatever, and you get to vote on what you think for the community. So that's happening at the next meeting on the 17th. But I just thought it was a very well-attended event, and I thought it went extremely well. Okay. So the next scheduled city council meeting will be January 8, 2018, here in the council room. And now we need a motion to adjourn at 9:15. Motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
There seems to be a question on the, to adjourn.
This is a coincidence, but in 2013, I did the same thing. I'm gonna wish everybody here in this room a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Because I have to be adjourned, but yes, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to everybody. All those in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
All those who are adjourned.